Seven o'clock, time to call and move to order. May everyone please rise and join us in the prayer. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation, a God, equal and free. Kathy, would you please? Here? Here? Here. Here. President.
Here.
Are there any changes to the agenda as proposed? Is there a motion to adopt the agenda as presented? So move. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? Move.
Second.
Move and seconded, roll call.
Nelson?
Yes.
Yes. Shiner?
Yes.
Baby?
Yes.
Sibilla?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Is there a motion to approve the NIA consent agenda as presented? So move.
Second.
Move and seconded, roll call.
Ren? Yes. Shiner?
Yes.
Baby?
Yes.
Sibilla?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes. Audience to visitors, is there anyone in the audience this evening who would like to address the board? No? Okay, we'll move on then. Communications, correspondence, informational items? Letters and newsletters? Lots of invitations? I don't understand why they all just come at the same time. Foyer requests? None? Suspension report? Couple. Community reports?
The Citizens Advisory Committee met last week. It broke. Spent the bulk of the meeting, actually spent all the meeting, discussion of planning for next year. And Steve went into a lot of detail in regards to just the ever-changing guidelines that we have to follow. Anticipation, it'll probably be, it'll probably change again. I'm not going to steal his whole presentation. You get a chance to look at it earlier, so I might be able to jump in. But, no, it was a lot of good discussion, and I think that the point is to kind of, you know, kind of have a panel, if you will, to get feedback. And that's a lot of the discussion, is really just trying to put out there, hey, here's what's going on, here's what we're thinking, and then just hearing from the parents that are involved and getting that feedback from them, and hearing it from, there's a wide variety in that group. So, you know, parents of high schoolers have a, you know, a completely different impression of something as opposed to somebody who is a parent or an elementary student. Just being able to get all that feedback and just have a good discussion, so, that's all.
Thank you. Other community reports? Well, we'll move on to the Assistant Superintendent for Business Services report.
Thanks Jim, I have a couple items tonight. The first one being some more bid approvals I asked you for tonight. We met back in March and did the bulk of the bids. At the time, the roofs were too wet, so we weren't up there, we weren't able to get up there and get some moisture scans that we needed to get done. And so now that they've finally dried out, we were able to get up there. Yes, I was up there in my heels one day, they all made fun of me.
Hope you didn't put any holes in your...
I did. It was plenty up there already, so. But so we did go out to bid for roofs. And so we had two bidders this time around, so I had the bid results on there. And we had Malcorp Roofing of Illinois put a bid in, and also Riddiford Roofing. And so tonight, I would ask for approval of Riddiford Roofing. And so their total bid was 2.240651. And then we also did have a couple alternates at North Elementary up on their roof. And so we did approve those two alternates also, so the total of their bid was 2.46532. Just for reference, when we originally were looking at what we wanted to do with our roofs, our original budget was about $5.3 million. So, and Chris is here tonight from Shales. If, Chris, you want to talk about kind of what changed what we originally had anticipated doing?
Sure. Originally, part of the original plan, I believe, over the, I think it was what, 2028?
Yep.
There was a bunch of roof replacements that were going to take place, full replacements. So, removal and then new roof installation. After the scans were performed this spring, it was shown that a lot of the roof was not as bad as initially anticipated, so we were able to do some recoding in lieu of, patching and recoding in lieu of full roof replacement. So, that's why the numbers came in a little bit lower than what the original budget was, you know, through that 2028 year.
So, what type of longevity will the patching give us?
So, what it is, is the roof scan showed the wet areas of the roof. So they'll cut out and remove the foam in those areas and replace the foam with new foam, and then they could recoat those roofs. And that recoding can be done multiple times. It's not just a one and done, and then you have to tear off again. I think they give a 12-year warranty on the recoding, so you're good for 12 years, then you can recoat again. So I think part of the key to that system is keeping a continuous maintenance going throughout the years and keeping up on it, making sure it doesn't get into bad shape to where it gets real bad and gets wet underneath in the foam to where you'd have to do a full tear-off down the road. So you have multiple times that you can recoat. I think they're saying three to four times more that you can recoat on top of what you have now.
How often would you recoat it, or does it depend on wear and tear?
I think it depends on wear and tear, but I believe the 12-year warranty is probably a good timing. It'd be, you know, you kind of want to keep that roof within warranty if you can.
So we can get, we can get further use at a cheaper cost, is what it comes down to?
Correct.
Much cheaper.
Yeah. The initial, we use this product a lot. The initial one is giving about 60% of a replacement. And then we recoat, you don't have primer anymore, you only have top coat, so it's only about 45% of the initial cost. And they'll expect it at the 11- and 12-year mark and determine if you need to recoat it or they'll extend it to 15 years. And it's warranty to the death, even though you're putting over a different roofing system. That's why they're removing any bad sections and bringing it back. We use this product quite a bit, and you can usually get three to four uses out of what one full replacement would be. And it also doesn't count as a roof. So by code, you can only put three roofs on a building before you have to take it off. And this is totally, it doesn't count as actual roof.
Right.
So you'd never have to tear this stuff off if you maintain it properly for a long, long time.
That's great.
And Riddiford, for what it's worth, I work for them, they're a very solid organization.
Was there a motion to approve the capital improvement renovations bid release number two to Riddiford Roofing? So move. Kathy? Move and seconded, roll call.
Shiner?
Yes.
Baby? Sibilla?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Ren?
Yes.
Kathy?
The next item I have is the Certificate of Excellence. So this is the one-time-a-year, I get to brag on my office staff, who are very humble. So, we have participated, I think this is our 18th year that we've participated in this. So this is something through the Association of School Business Officials that you can put together a comprehensive annual financial report. And so there's a lot of requirements that you have to do to put that report together, and then you would submit it to ASBO International, and they take a look at it. And then, you know, they pick it apart, and if they feel like you've done everything correctly, then they award you the Certificate of Excellence. And so, this is our 18th year receiving this award. And this is really done by all of the staff in the business office, so it's all their hard work, and they put this together every year in conjunction with our auditors. So, kudos to them. This is for fiscal year '20, so we'll continue to apply for this for fiscal year '21.
Well, thank you, I think. Congratulations for keeping that tradition alive and for keeping, for keeping that standard of excellence going in our reports. You know, I think that's probably an honor that maybe kind of goes under the bridge a little bit. We don't pay that much attention to it, but it's really a very important honor to have.
And it's not something we have to do. I mean, we're required to do a annual financial report, but we are not required to do a comprehensive annual financial report. So, it's something that we, you know, choose to do and work on every year. So, like I said, they do all the hard work, so we all sit on that.
But it's, as you said, it's an excellent reflection on you and your staff. And it's a great service to the district because it provides information that people need to know and often want to, so, thank you very much. And please let the...
I will.
...the staff know that we send our things.
That's all I have to say.
Superintendent's report.
Oh, there's, sorry about that, Mr. Slidler's got a certificate.
There's a certificate.
Well, good evening, everybody. I'll start off, a couple things I talk about every meeting. Our mission is to harrow all learners to succeed in their world. Our vision, which is to provide an ideal learning experience where students and staff are engaged and want to come back the next day. Our core values, honesty, trustworthiness, integrity, equality, empathy, respect, citizenship, digital citizenship, responsibility, and cooperation. And our professional learning communities, they ask and discuss five questions what we want students to know and learn, what the students want to know and learn, how will we know if they learned it, what will we do if they don't learn it, and what can we do if they already know it? And that takes us to the first part of the superintendent's report this evening, which is Little Spartans Early Childhood Program. This is kind of an annual update, and at this time, I'm going to turn the floor over to Lynn Riley and Mary Jo Schwartz, who run that program.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. Lynn Riley, Director of Student Services, everyone knows me, I think, except for mine. A new board member. Mary Jo Schwartz.
Special Division Coordinator for the Early Childhood Program.
So, we appreciate the opportunity to talk about our Little Spartans Early Childhood Program. MJ is our expert, so I will interject, but a big part of this will be Mary Jo. And Mary Jo, he has how many days left to retirement? Last presentation for her.
We won't have to see you again. Before she moves on to travel.
You want to have to see us again?
No, she'll want to.
I'll come and present once a year on my travel. About the Early Childhood Program.
We're going to hold you today.
Okay. First of all, I'd like to say thank you for allowing us to show you all the great things that we do at the early childhood level. I'm excited to share all of the great instruction provided by our teachers, our parent educators, our speech pathologists, our occupational therapists, our physical therapists, and of course, our social worker as well. I'd like to say thank you to all the parents, because they have done a tremendous job at helping their children learn how to wear masks. And we were all very concerned about that at the very beginning of the year. And we have little ones, little three-year-olds wearing masks. Sometimes not so long, not so well, but they're still wearing them, they're still trying. And our teachers have been working hard on that. So that's a really great thing. So I'll just get started with what our program is. I know you've seen some of these slides before, but the Little Spartans Early Program is an inclusive community preschool, providing developed, learning-appropriate learning through research-based and play-based curriculum. Can everyone hear me? I feel like I'm muffled. All right, thank you. This program is open to residents of this Sycamore School District, ages three to five, not of kindergarten age. Our program meets four days a week, Monday through Thursday. We have two sessions, a morning session that runs from 9:00 to 11:30, and one, the afternoon session, runs from 1:00 to 3:30. We use the creative curriculum, which is the ISBE State-approved curriculum for early childhood. We also follow the early, along our early learning standards. Those are there to help us measure the growth that our children make. We expose our children to the district curriculum, including some of the things that you already know about, but we use some of that same vocabulary so that once they get into kindergarten, they're able to understand and they're a little bit familiar with it. We are an alternative to the faith-based programs that are offered in the community, so that's one of the reasons why we really push this hard, so it was an alternative for parents.
Oh, okay. I have no...
You're okay.
So our program is not just what I have, it's what I have to have. So, under IDA and federal mandate, we have to offer supports and services to our kids with special education needs from the age of three until the day before they turn 22. So it's three to 21. And in that program, we have to look at our students as soon as they turn three, the day they turn three, if we've done an evaluation, or they come from PI and we've said, yes, they need to continue services, they are in our program. So we add students all year round when they turn three. But we're always looking at that least restrictive environment, and we'll talk a little bit more about that as we go along. So having our kids with their typical peers. So our students that have an IEP, then are with our kiddos from our community. We feel pretty fortunate to have a great option for our community in a preschool.
I'm going to talk a little bit about early intervention, which is where we get a lot of our children with delays and disabilities. Early intervention is the Zero to Three Program, the Ruts of Three Program. Those children are identified through hospitals, doctors, and other agencies, not through us. But we are then required to examine or do an evaluation on them once they turn three, like Lynn said. So I just want to just show you a little bit, just a couple things that are in here that are really important. So, children and parents of three-year-olds are entitled to a smooth and effective transition by the third birthday, which means we start the process when they're two years, six months, that's when I get involved, and I start to work with the parents and get them to understand, help them understand what the special education process is, what it looks like, how it feels. Sometimes ask questions, they ask lots of questions about what does the public school do that's different than what early intervention does, which is, one of the biggest differences is that we support our students in school, and we don't go to the groups where early intervention does their services and their therapies in the home. Couple of the other things that are, are part of the slide are just that when a, when children turn two years, nine months, that's when I meet with the parents, and we have what's called a transition planning conference. And that's where I meet them, I meet the child, we take a tour of the program, of the classroom, so they get a little bit more familiar. Just like, it's like holding a hand of a kindergarten parent, once again. It's before they get to that stage, and you know that saying that I've always said, that everything you need to learn, that you need to know in life, you learn in kindergarten? Well, we're the people responsible for getting them ready to learn in kindergarten. That's it, anyone else?
I agree.
Yep. No? I think this, okay. So what we do is we have, go through the special education process all at the tender age of almost three years old. We have a domains meeting, we bring up all the professionals around, we have our speech pathologists, our social worker, our school psychologist, our occupational therapist, our physical therapist if we need one, our special education teacher. And we go through all those different domains that impacted child's education, look at all those areas, and we ask lots of questions, and we ask, the parents are part of that team, they're a very vital part of that team, where they help us know their child, they're their child's best advocate, and they know how much progress they've made from all the therapies they've received through EDY. I'm sorry, I have a bullet, are you...
No, no.
We also have to offer a community screening, which is a federal mandate. The mandate requires us to hold at least two screenings a year, and they require them to be in a mass situation. We offer screenings to our community, because we all feel that it's very important to offer that to our community. We offer the five to six times a year, depending on the calendar and the way the Fridays come out in the end of the month. And we don't have screenings on usually November and December, right on there, because all of our Fridays are taken up with different... Parents are referred to screenings through their physicians or healthcare providers, through the health departments, local preschools, and Head Start, also daycare providers, and the other parents help refer them to services and inquiries about whether they have speech issues or whatever else they're seeing as developmental milestones. We have different outcomes from those screening appointments. It can be anywhere from an evaluation for special education and related services. It could be, hey, you know, we see some, we see some issues, but you know what? Let's let your child grow a little bit and come back for re-screen, maybe in a couple months or maybe in a fall. Then the last outcome can be, has a huge celebration. We see, we see older, lesser disabilities of the schooling situation, and we say, hey, your child's met all the developmental milestones, and that's a huge celebration. And we like to, you're ready to go to preschool, so come out over to Little Spartans.
And out of those screenings, we certainly do get some of our community students, so students who may have speech-only needs, so they would have just come in maybe for 30 or 60 minutes a week for speech. Some of those students join our tuition-based program in our early childhood. And so we are pretty proud of our program, we think it's a very high-quality program. And then for some of the students who aren't eligible for special education, then they also sometimes just say, yes, we want to be part of your blended classroom, even though obviously they're going to pay tuition, and they're not getting special education services, but they have high-quality teachers and our staff that come and go from those classrooms. So even in our blended classrooms, you have a speech cap that's coming and going, a social worker that's coming and going, OTPT that's coming and going, as well as your special education teacher.
Sorry. Sorry.
So, in special education, we have 13 indicators. Well, really, there's 15. But I'm going to talk about only indicator six, and we keep data on that for the state. And indicator six is the one that looks at our educational environment for kids who are three to five. So, before we grew, and we'll talk a little bit about our growth, we really were self-contained. So we only had students with special needs in our, in our early childhood program. And we ended up being what Mary Jo and I would call the naughty list, so the highest speaking naughty list. And out of that, we had to write a plan.
Attend classes.
Yeah, there were ten classes.
We had to provide professional development. Every... Only ourselves, but our staff.
Yeah. And quarterly, we had to put together our reports, send that to the state on our numbers, what our growth was going to look like, how we were going to become more inclusive, how we were going to include our community students, our tuition-based students, with our students with special needs. And we already had that plan in place, and we were already heading in that direction, but we had to jump through an awful lot of hoops for ISBE as well. So, I think there's been data on there, because we got a letter saying we were still going to have to go to classes, we're going to have to do the PD, we still were going to have to do these quarterly reports, and Mary Jo and I sat, we did all of our numbers, and we're like, no, something's wrong here. We knew that we were kind of a lot of tuition-based students, and our program had really doubled and tripled in size, really. So we sent all our numbers to ISBE, and they said that our numbers were actually better than the state average. And so we got off the naughty list. We still are. I mean, not this year, I don't think they're going to keep data like we're hoping through the pandemic. But the law says 70/30, so 70% of your students would be typically developing, and 30% would be kids with special needs. For EC, they were really looking more like 50/50, but we really got to 70/30 in most of our blended classrooms.
Most of our blended classrooms. Just to give you a little bit of background, I don't like hearing this, so we have four teachers, and we've grown, and you'll see a graph soon, but we've grown from two teachers, and then we added a third teacher a couple years ago, and then we added a fourth teacher. So we're really working very hard, the teachers, the program, the support staff.
They're here, right over here. I can applaud them, I bet the staff.
And worked very hard at trying to increase our tuition-based peers, because we know that, we know that that's what's most important for our students with delays and disabilities, they learn best from their peers. They, those are tuition-based children that are the ones that have the rich language models, and their social, emotional, learning skills are demonstrated every day in the classroom. And that's where our kids with delays and disabilities learn the most. And we know that kids learn best at that age from each other.
And it's federal as well. So I mean, it's a federal mandate to have that least restrictive environment, and to have our tuition-based and our students that have IEP, obviously, together in the same classroom. So we feel pretty proud of that as well.
I don't know what happened to all our cute pictures. I have a few stories for you.
There's a couple of them.
No, they're coming. Okay, they're coming? Yeah. Okay.
They're going to march them right after the...
Okay. I do want to read this slide, because I think this is really very important, about what does research say about early childhood education? Not just special education, but early childhood education. A recent meta-analysis of over 40 years of program evaluations showed a gain of an additional third of a year in areas of language, math, and reading for children who are enrolled in a high-quality preschool program. Keep that high quality in mind. Students who enter kindergarten without any preschool experience demonstrate gaps in math and literacy and intend to widen those gaps over time. Preschool is a financial investment. Benefit-cost estimates range between the savings of $3 to $7 for every dollar spent. So a high-quality preschool program is very, very important for your school to do. There we go. This is, this is just one of our, this is our, oh, this one is our study of Monet and the Water Lilies, and the children made this as a replica of what they felt was their interpretation of Monet's Water Games. What is a high-quality preschool program? Teachers in a high-quality preschool program, they build on what your child already knows, what they can do, they provide materials and experiences that are challenging, but that children can do with a little help. This is called developmentally appropriate practice. Developmentally appropriate practice is teaching based on each child's age and stage of development, helping children meet goals that are just right for them, valuing and including each child's family, language, and culture. This is the definition of a high-quality preschool program, and our district offers a high-quality preschool program to our community. And here we are, preschooling. I just want to give you a little bit of background on all the different pivots that our staff has had to do during this time. We've, just like the rest of the district, we've had to pivot time and time again. We started off in August, ready to go. We were, we thought we, we had plans ready to go, we had, we divided our classrooms into pods. We were ready to go with our tuition-based peers, our, our children with IEPs. We had a blended situation. So we, we brought them, got ready to come back, and then we had to pivot, and we had to go all virtual. So our teachers had to learn how to teach preschool virtually, if you can imagine. And, you know, we struggled as a staff between screen time, hands-on activities, because we know that screen time needs to be limited for our three-to-five-year-olds. They cannot sit in front of a screen for, you know, we don't want to add to that. So we really did, really did a great job of putting together kits and things to send home to children and their families, to help them with preschool, with virtual preschool. Then, in October, it's a little different. Yeah. All virtual included the CSOC classroom, Google classrooms, we use Bitmoji with additional resources. So they've set up their classrooms just like they did K through 12. We then pivoted and went to in-person learning for our most impacted students, so we brought back five students. And we still had our three other teachers teaching virtual preschool, in the morning and in the afternoon. In the afternoon, they had one-on-one times with their children with IEPs so that they can help facilitate learning and meeting their IEP goals. Then, we pivoted again in November, and we really wanted to, we kept making all this time that we'll be able to bring back our tuition-based peers, but we just couldn't. We couldn't do that, we had several families that were very, very disappointed as we were, because we know we want them all, we want all of those little ones in our classroom. We had a significant staff shortage with our parent educators. We just couldn't, we couldn't provide a safe and secure area and classroom for our children. So what we had to do was click out of the box, and we did some co-teaching. So we had two preschool teachers together with our children and a parent educator, and we were able to meet all the needs of our children. And we have another teacher that did smaller class with a parent educator, and she was able to meet the needs of her children. And we still had one virtual teacher who was teaching in AM and PM section, because we still had parents that were opting out of, they wanted, you know, they wanted their children to receive their services, but they were still too afraid or for some other families who said they couldn't make it into school. So we still offered that.
And we had tuition-based families that stayed with us through this whole COVID process, even though we couldn't bring them back in person. Of course, we reduced their tuition, but they still wanted what we were doing as far as the high-quality programming, even at home. And you'll see later in the presentation, some of the things that our, even our tuition-based families said about all the things that were done, and all the things that they learned for staying really with the program this whole time.
And that is something that was very important to us when we were trying to prioritize what's important and how we're going to meet the needs of our children. One of the first things we all, as a whole, as a whole team, decided that providing preschool to our children... providing preschool to our tuition-based peers is still important. We didn't want to lose them. We didn't want to lose those families to other programs. So we still offered it to them. We ended this year with twenty-nine students with IUPs and seventeen tuition-based students. So of the, I don't remember exactly what the pre-COVID number was for registration, but I think it was about forty-five, forty-six families that had registered that were tuition-based. We still ended up with seventeen in the, in the virtual setting. So I thought that was pretty good. Here's some pandemic teaching, some of our Bitmoji and classrooms, and some of our resources that go along with it, and we'll be quick on any of those things. Teaching in an early childhood pandemic, something I think that's really important is that our staff worked very hard, our teachers worked very hard at putting together hands-on activities so that we could send home to those families. Kids that had things for shaving cream exploration, water play, animal prep for sorts. We provided all that. We provided books, we provided book lists. We provided, still provided Jolly Comics lessons and second-step lessons to our virtual families, to our families that were participating virtually. And a lot of parent coaching. That was one of the biggest celebrations that we had this year through the pandemic. If you've been, find anything positive, is that we did do a lot of parent coaching. So we were able to show what we do at school, and we were able to demonstrate and show those back to the parents so that they could follow through and use some of those same strategies that we use at school.
And our parents really appreciated that coaching. In the, in the setting and on the side. So for some of our parents, and I know you've heard that from other principals when we're looking at, you know, some of the silver linings, right, to the pandemic, was, were in parents' homes, but they were also in our classrooms. And so it worked both ways. So we were really able to support our parents, to support their own children at home, of things that maybe we never would have been able to do if we just had their children and they were in their homes and not with us each time we were teaching. So our teachers did amazing supporting our parents through all of this so that they could have an experience at home at three and four years old. You know, you can imagine that. Our parents had to do all of those things with our staff support.
And we did have a couple of siblings that were participating. We did, we did help support younger siblings too because if they were there to learn, we wanted them. Yeah. And there, there's some examples of our kits that we sent home. So we worked really hard at providing those hands-on activities, which we do.
We had everything in there that parents would want or need so that they could all participate fully in whatever activities we're, we're presenting.
Here's our enrollment growth for the program. So our goal for this year is to increase our tuition-based students from fifty-six. We have fifty-six parents. We have fifty-six children signed up for our preschool control, which is great.
And we're not done.
And we're not done. It's still open.
All summer long. We'll take families all summer.
So we're still looking at registration. So we do have open registration still. But if you look at our numbers, you know, we started off with, in 2016, with twenty-two IUP children and eighteen tuition, and it's just gone up from there. And then 2019, 20, we had thirty-nine students with IUPs, and we had sixty-eight tuition-based students. With that tuition, you know, they do pay a hundred and eighty-five dollars a month. We also have a pay-to-ride transportation fee, so it's within the district. And children that want to take the bus, and as long as it's within the district boundaries, and they pay five hundred dollars per year, they can access transportation.
And I just wanted to point out, when we look at the twenty students that have an IUP currently for this kind of year, that's our beginning number. So we have evaluation meetings the entire year. So when you see like eighteen, nineteen, and nineteen, twenty, that's at the end of the school year. So that would be pretty typical because our, our numbers of students with IUP that will come out of our screenings or out of EI will just grow the entire year. As well as our tuition-based students. We don't just have them enroll in the summer. A student can turn three anytime during the school year, a tuition-based student. And if we have space, and then we don't have to put them on a waiting list, we can take them as well. So we take students all year round. If you think it's an advantage to our program that, you know, you don't have to register just one time, but you can come on here.
And you don't have to, you put on a waiting list. A lot of preschools around the area have a pod update. Or we have open enrollment, which is really to our advantage. I just wanted to show it in a graph form. And we're really working hard. The staff has worked very hard at providing information to the public. You know that they're on social media, and they help promote our program that way. They build great relationships with families so that those families go out and tell other families about our program. So with the mouth, it's great, and we just keep it busy.
We also have a lot of staff who use our programming as well. So a great advantage for our staff to be able to be in our Little Spartans program. So we foresee our nineteen, twenty, when we were really up there, obviously, before the pandemic hit, is where we would like to go and further.
And here we are, preschooling during the pandemic.
So currently, we have eight sections of our preschool. So seven of those sections would be blended. So there was a few tuition-based students and our students that have an IUP. And then we have one section that would be considered self-contained for some of our students with very significant needs. So it's a somewhat smaller classroom, but they still have opportunities for inclusion in our blended classrooms.
And when we're staff fully, we have twelve to fifteen tuition-based students in a class along with five to seven students with IUPs. One teacher and two paraeducators.
And then you'll see in there those speech-only students. Those students would not be classroom students, but that number grows as well. So it starts at one place, and then as the year goes on with our EI students and our screening students, that number just continues to grow all year for students who then get speech-only services. So they may come thirty minutes a week or sixty minutes a week. And like I said, some of them, once they start coming for speech services, would like to be tuition-based students, so they'd like to be classroom students as well.
We work a lot on social-emotional learning at the early childhood level. It's where we spend a lot of our time. Our second-step lessons are taught by our classroom teachers and supported by our social worker. Our social workers, they reinforce language and concepts from the social-emotional curriculum. We use a push-in model with all of our related services. Our social worker, when she pushes in, she's able to implement tier-two interventions for our students in case they have some difficulty with some of their social-emotional needs. Our social worker also co-implements with a speech and language pathologist to help make sure that language is consistent, they're using the same vocabulary and housekeeping and wrestling. She works with, they work together with teachers to have plain ideas and to get really good promoting learning at home. They practice the social-emotional learning skills in the moment because I know you don't understand this, but three-year-olds can really have a meltdown about not sharing and calming down, and they're able to play and understanding their feelings. We also help with their parents so they can understand what's developmentally appropriate. And even though they might feel like they're under pressure at home, we give them lots of areas to use so that they can work with their children too. I'd like to talk a little bit about some of our celebrations. We've got a lot of them. First of all, we, we got our kids got. We wanted those tuition-based kids, but we just couldn't do it this year. And we are ready, we're ready to go for next year. And overall progress, in this, in this crazy time, we've seen a lot of progress with our kids in the shorter amount of time they've been in school. I mean, they just need their teachers and their support staff and their routines, and they can just soar. We've had increased parent communication and interaction and follow-through with them. They've really learned how to work with their kids. We've had specific one-on-one individual time with our children that have IUPs with that afternoon session when it was virtual, and then also now that the class sizes are very small. We've had increased verbal responses from our students that came from when they were all virtual. We really had some students that were very hesitant to participate, and then over time, they were able to feel, feel confident and start to, to really answer questions and participate in the virtual classes. And we are getting trees for our playground for shade. Very excited about that.
It's very hot there.
It's very warm.
It's a little shade.
Some of the challenges that we still continue to face, and we have faced all year long, are that this, you know, we really want our community students back. We really do. Stacking, we just run into some, really some difficult situations with stacking. Just can't find the, the paraeducator support that we need. Maintaining attention, so during some of those virtual sessions, we had a tough time keeping, keeping our little ones on task, but we learned some new strategies on how to do that. We also learned that children can say mute really quickly when they're three years old, so they know how to do that. And, you know, like I said before, the masks are really important, and we know that, and our teachers really try to support that. But that still is still an issue. We still have some children that refuse to wear them, but we're still working on it, and it's still real good when they do. And it's just sustaining technology. We know we always have little glitches here and there, but sometimes that's what she wants.
And some of our Little Spartan program goals, of course, to continue to promote the growth and development of our Little Spartans program, increase our tuition peers in our blended classrooms, so we've doubled in size. That's for, obviously, the pandemic here. But the size of that, we would love to double in size in the next two years as well. So our goal is just to continue to grow our program and to grow our tuition-based students and just continue to add sections as we get more students. Increase our social media presence, so that's something that we worked on when we did double in size with getting out there, be on Facebook. Mary Jo did a great job of turning some community organization, get-togethers, and, you know, things to just get out there and to show our program. Continue to partner with Oscar Junior. So that has been a huge benefit to our families to have full-day programming. So we feel like our program can grow, but Oscar Junior can grow as well, side by side with us, so that our families then have all day. So they have half the day with us, and then half the day in Oscar Junior's. Extend that professional development. Mary Jo talked a little bit about that development, the three-year practices. We'd really like to focus on that for a whole year of learning. Focusing on our social-emotional skills, and then we did have a goal about planting the trees, but Mary Jo has gotten the trees. So I guess I would take that goal off because we are getting trees, and they will be planted. I want a picture of our kiddos on our playground. We're still very proud of our playground, you know, all the work that Mary Jo and our community put into us being able to have this. This is just a huge asset to our Little Spartans program. And somebody on this board right now, there's a little one on there, but I do believe that's a face that you might know and call.
He's pretty cute.
He's really cute. Pretty cute.
We do have some family feedback. I'm not going to read everything to you. You have it, you can read it. We have some tremendous support from our families. They all emailed. I have those emails. I'd be lucky to go with them too. I'd be happy to do that, but these are quotes right from their emails. We've just had a lot of positive feedback. These are not only parents of students with IUPs, but our tuition, our tuition students as well, our tuition parents as well.
We picked eight families, but there were more.
Yeah.
You don't always get positive feedback. You don't always get positive parent emails. And many of these parents said, share with whoever you need to share with. We just want, want everyone to know Little Spartans and what an amazing program it is.
And here we are, preschooling again, outside and painting. I just want to say, on behalf of the early childhood teachers, the paraeducators, the speech pathologists, the occupational therapists, the physical therapists, and social workers, I hope I remembered everyone.
Vision itinerary.
Vision itinerary. At the preschool level, we do really hard things together, and we impact that so lifetime.
I think I've got one slide that I'll add here at the end about the program. But any questions for Mary Jo and Lynn before I let them sit down?
I have, I have actually several. So I guess, do we, has anybody ever done a study about what the cost of the program is and what the cost is to deliver to tuition students? And figure out whether the tuition covers the cost?
No. The cost that we set out to parents is based on an average of the preschool program seven years. Our program is forty a week.
Is there anything that caps non-IUP student enrollment?
Sorry, I couldn't hear.
The only thing that would cap that is not having enough spaces or enough teachers, I guess. So right now.
So is more, more students apply, then we just hire more staff? Is that what happens?
Yes.
But we don't know whether the cost of tuition is covering those costs of hiring staff?
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, but we would have to hire those staff anyways to cover our IUP students. So we would have to, we wouldn't provide that?
No, I'm talking just about tuition students now.
Right, but we have, we have to have the offset. Like Lynn said, we have to have at least thirty percent IUP students and seventy percent tuition-based students. So we would have to hire those teachers anyways. So I don't think there would ever be like a, there would never be cost neutral for what we're charging our tuition students to cover the cost of, of those teachers.
Well, if we, if, if we keep taking students who pay tuition in, then that's going to change the overall ratio. And then we wouldn't have that need for those teachers, but we'd still have those students who are coming in, and we'd have to get more staff because we can't, because the numbers would dictate that we would need staff for each smaller group.
Part of what we're required to do is the federal piece, you know, the federal mandate and offering for the non-tuition-based students. That would dictate an increase in that, that number would dictate an increase to. There's an option.
So we get federal funding for, for the tuition?
No.
We don't get any outside funding?
Very little.
You get about fifteen thousand dollars in that IEP preschool. That's, that's for our IUP students.
Oh, for the IUP students?
Right.
And we don't get anything for tuition?
No. Except for the tuition. Exactly, yeah, except for tuition.
Whether you have dollars in the bank, it goes into the general fund.
Yeah.
But what you're getting, Jim, is something like the Oscar program. The bigger this program gets, the more of a loss it is financially to the district.
Exactly. And that's, I'm just wondering if at some point we need to cap how many students we take instead of just taking everybody that wants to come in and be preschool.
That sounds like we can't cap with the only control we have. Or that loss is like tuition we charge for our tuitioning students?
Yeah, and one of the things that, that I think Joe mentioned is that that tuition right now is pretty competitive with other programs in the area so that we don't price ourselves, ourselves out of that. The students will eventually become, for the most part, those students will eventually become tickle more students. So there's a cost perspective, and I think it's important for us to keep an eye on that. At the same time, I would go back to one of the slides earlier about the benefits of, of the early childhood program and, you know, part of it's the return in dollar. But we also know that the sooner you get those students in a classroom, providing support, providing those activities, the better they have a chance to succeed once they get into classrooms at kindergarten level and then full.
Totally, totally agree with that. But the question would be whether the private sector who provides preschooling should, you know, have those students or whether we should be using public funds to subsidize some students but not also.
Yeah, so I, I see where you're coming from. And the last comment I was going to make is that there's this balance between, you know, what we offer, what the cost is, how competitive that is, the benefit of having those students in our district, and at some point, is the cost too high? You know, the, the district is sustaining and tapping that at all. I don't really have an answer for that or even a recommendation for that, but that's something that they'll be looking at. And I'll go over some members and probably have a conversation about that first. And then if the board would like to cap tuition-paying little childhood students, we can certainly look at a recommendation for that.
I mean, I'd just like to see those figures so that I would, I would know what I'm dealing with. I kind of feel like we're.
I think our, our tuition kids aren't the ones driving our class size. I think our, our tuition kids aren't the ones driving our class sizes. It's really our IEP students.
Well, I looked at that chart, and it does, that doesn't seem to be the case. The IEP students started out low, they peaked, and then they went back to, to low numbers.
That's just the start of the school year, like Lynn talked about.
They'll go back to thirty-five.
That'll start going up, because as it was fifth through three, they come in, so we have to be able to have enough to cover them.
So I guess I don't understand it. That's not the total students for the year?
We're the twenty-one, twenty-two school a year. No, we're starting off fall with twenty IEP students. Which means that we do about forty to forty-five early intervention evaluations every year. So of those forty to forty-five students that we evaluate, some of them become eligible for our program, some of them are speech-only students. So that number will increase, and we'll probably end up with, we're the ninety to twenty, thirty-nine number, forty number.
So it stays pretty constant at least then? It's not really, it's not increasing by weeks or days?
It increases by about two to three students a month.
Over the course of the year?
Over the course of the year.
Yeah.
Can you go back a bit, correct?
Sure. For this one?
Yep. I'm not sure who said it, but I don't know if it was in a poll, but truly, our IEP numbers drive our tuition base. Because if we have to keep it at seventy-three, then we have to have seventy percent of our students, students that are tuition-based. So really, if you have thirty percent IEP children, then you're going to have to have children that are tuition-based.
Right, and I under, and I understand that, and I, and I don't have any problem with that. But what, the problem I have is if we, if we, you know, go above that required ratio, then it tilts, you know, onto the side of private.
There's no line on there where we're even close to thirty, seventy. I mean, we, we need to take more tuition students, which is what you've been saying this whole presentation. We've got even thirty IEP students, we need seventy tuitions, and we don't have that number anywhere on that.
No, we're, right now, we're at fifty-six registered, so we're getting there. We're open for registration all summer long. So we, we may hit our mark of seventy tuition-based students.
Right, and if we end up with forty IEPs, then we need ninety-one tuition students.
Hit that ratio.
Yeah, and hit the study.
At a minimum.
I guess I'm seeing that as a natural cap. I mean, if you're always trying to hit that, you know. Yeah, and that's what I, I guess that's what I'm trying to say, is that our natural cap, so that we don't look to take more students over that. Where we're, we're having to pay more money.
I know, you would have to look at the benefit piece of that, right, not just the, the tuition base. There is a lot of benefit to a district educating their own from three to five and getting them ready for kindergarten, so.
I understand, but that's a whole different discussion.
It is a different discussion, right, but it is kind of part of the whole, but you're right. I mean, it's a different discussion, but it's part of.
Right, and I kind of don't want to go into that territory.
Right.
Not, not a district territory, because we, we, several years ago, even talked a little bit about that. And there's a great concern that, you know, there is, there is, there aren't private facilities that, that provide these experiences for kids. And, you know, we don't want, we don't want them to go out of this society.
No, 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 great relationships with our community, for sure.
I just may interject a different question if you want to continue.
Sure, yeah, go ahead.
Without offending any of the competing programs in town, can you speak to how the quality of our program compares? Because it's my perception, based on your presentation and the quality staff that I know that we have, that we're probably providing an experience that is more rigorous, more supportive of students, especially those obviously with greater needs. So if we're going to compare the programs apples to apples and say, well, we're charging about what the other programs are charging, are we providing the same or a better experience than those other programs?
We're providing a better experience, because we have certified qualified teachers. We have support staff that's been trained. We also follow I, the Ohio State Board of Educated Curriculum, so the creative curriculum. So we are providing a much higher quality preschool experience.
Which is exactly what I knew you were going to say, but I wouldn't keep it down. Which I think at least toeing down the, our mode of thought, we, I, I think we can justify it and maybe not price it ourselves based on what the competition is doing, based on what we offer.
So a little higher, is what you're saying?
Right. But I agree with you that I, I would like to see what that investment cost is, so we can understand it. It's not to say it's not worth it.
Right, I, I, yeah, I don't know, I, I don't, I just don't know what the cost is, so it would be nice to see. So when, when a child within, in IEP in this program needs special services, who coordinates that program?
I coordinate that program. I coordinate the, the special education teacher, who is our early childhood teacher. They're duly certified. And also with, they become the case manager, and then together we work and provide those services. If they need occupational therapy or speech therapy, that's all part of the program, so that they just see those services while they're at school.
So it's only you who do that, or do all the teachers do that? I guess I'm trying to figure out.
I.
How and all that. Just, just you, okay. You're the lucky one.
I get to the depth.
So along those lines, could you walk us through a concise version of what a typical meeting would be for your role?
A typical week?
Yeah.
We start the day.
Maybe you should come see her tomorrow.
I do spend a lot of time with parents, so I make a lot of home calls first night in the morning. I make sure I'm there when the kids are off the bus to help bring them in and to help support the teachers, to get them into their routines and keep them going. Also, I have to know the children, because I need to help represent them at any kind of meeting. I'm also there as an advocate for their child, along with their classroom teacher and all the rest of the related service people. I work with a lot of outside organizations, so I work with PRCs, I work with Head Start. So I'm constantly making contacts with them, because they make the referrals to me. I am the one who schedules the screening appointments, all the different meetings that we have to have. So our early childhood children go through at least three meetings that I have to schedule, and I have to make sure that I do it in, in a timely fashion so that we are under that strict timeline of before they turn three. So I spend a lot of time scheduling. I'm the one who puts in the information into the special education software. So all that demographic information I have to put in. I have to start the IEP process, so I have to start that paperwork. And then I spend a lot of time in the classrooms to help support the classroom teachers and help problems solve. So when I do that, I'm not at my desk, so I can't answer my phone, and I get a lot of calls about, what is your preschool like? I have a child that has a disability. How do I go about accessing service? I do a lot of parent work. I, I don't mean to minimize a parent's role, but sometimes they need a little hand-holding, because this is their very first experience with the public school system. And we're their, we're their first face, and, you know, if they have, have a bad time with us, then that could really be a lifetime of not such a good relationship. So we work very, all of us work very hard in that, that parent relationship component. I spend some time throughout my day working on transportation issues, because we have little ones on a school bus, and a lot of our children with special needs have special needs when it comes to transportation. So we need car seats, and we need belt buckle, or seat buckles, and we need harnesses, and we need all kinds of things. So we're always, I'm always problem-solving on a daily basis. I try to get into those classrooms a lot so that I can see what's going on. So when a parent calls me and says, hey, I used to know, my child said this and this and this. I'm able to go and talk to that parent and say, you know, this is what I saw, or here I'll feed my mother. Make sure that our parent educators are, you know, providing support and using correct language and trying to help people understand how to use visuals in the classroom. I'm helping to support teachers that way and the, the rest of the staff. I also, part of my job is to do some other things that are duties as otherwise assigned by my director. So sometimes I find myself, you know, doing other things with our, some of our therapeutic place state program children.
Mary Jo has a case load of some of our kids who are in a therapeutic day school, so we've had to split that. Aunt Lou has a case manager of some of those students, so she does that piece as well. As well as DLM, which is the alternate assessment to an IAR, so she oversees that for the district. So all of our students in the district as well as all of our students in the therapeutic day school. So she has to be sure all the teachers are enrolled and taught how to do that, and that our therapeutic day school is also following that. There's obviously a federal mandate that our students could take the DLM, and then get the scores when they come in and to be sure our parents have all that piece of that other duty assigned, other than easy.
So it's not just easy. I do a lot of other things throughout the day that are, are very important to support the director and then also just with that case load of children that are therapeutic error placement, therapeutic IEP program.
She also oversees what we call a proportionate share. I think I've spoken about that before. So we get proportionate share funds, and out of that is our childifying responsibility for children who are homeschooled or children who are St. Mary's or children who are at cornerstone. So when any of those principals or parents have a need, they contact Mary Jo, she has a team of people, that then do that evaluation for those students as well, and see if they would be eligible for special education services. As a district, we only offer speech, but sometimes at those meetings, when they facilitate those meetings, those students would hear, if they came back to a public school, here's all the supports and services that we can offer. If you choose to stay, and that's certainly what our parents write, you know, we offer speech services to those students if they're eligible for that service.
We also provide professional development for the parent educators, and then together as a staff of early childhood people, provide professional development for that.
Specialized professional development only have hard days, because obviously ECE is such a specialized niche. It doesn't always fall into when we do our district-wide professional development. So I'm Jay and the staff, we go together, and I call and say, okay, we've got some kids need to develop because you have half-day or we have institute day, and we just didn't have anything that really fits the needs of our early childhood staff.
So when you say there are four teachers in the program, do you include yourself as one of those teachers?
But she stops for us.
She does, she does stop.
Dark of all trades.
She also gets the calls at six in the morning.
So can you tell us a little bit about how you relate to Lynn and as director and?
How do I relate to her?
Yeah, yeah, how, how that relationship works?
Sure. At, at the moment, a lot of the decisions that I have to make, I have to defer to Lynn. Just because it's not an administrative role at the moment, and that should, something that's real important. When I'm out of those day, day programs or I'm making decisions at the moment, you know, I am the LEA, and I'm there to represent the district, so that's pretty important. I help support her when it comes to decisions that she's making. We brainstorm a lot together on different strategies to use with children, even, even if they're not at the early childhood level, because I've been a special education teacher for thirty-four years. So I have some experience, so we have to brainstorm together on different strategies to use with different children at different levels.
We meet monthly, we speak almost daily.
Mary Jo, can you talk about how your role when you first took this position, how you've seen it evolve or change or grow, not just based on numbers, but the tasks you've done, the duties you do?
Yeah. You know, I've spent a lot of time trying to do a lot of public relations, and you can't do that in a classroom necessarily. I have to network with other early childhood coordinators and other outreach coordinators. That has changed drastically over the years, and then just to provide the support for the teachers, that's changed a lot. Making sure that, you know, each has what they need, but it's very much like a principal role, you know? I don't want to get so, you know, I can't come into work today, I have to do this, that, you know, things like that. I don't know what else has changed over the years. It's just, it's just a, just a, you know, with the increase in population, of course, then it just increases the job needs. And I, and I feel as an early childhood coordinator, as part of that program, it's very important that I'm a hands-on person, that I know those children, and to be able to represent them, so I'm there when they get on the bus, when they get off the bus. If any kind of an emergency happens in a classroom, I believe that that level, we have a lot of different emergencies, and I don't want to go into them. But, you know, I'm there to help, and that's really important to help grow this program and facilitate, and there's a support for teachers.
I think you have a very hard job, and, and I think you do it very well.
Well, thank you.
I want you to know that. I, I just never realized, you know, I, I always thought of you as, as a teacher as opposed to somebody who's kind of coordinating everything, so this is really very helpful. Mary Jo, where it is.
Just that early childhood run along with coordinating all of the meetings that go along with that. You know, each one of those children that come through for an evaluation, they have at least three meetings. So, and that's, you know, it has to be in a timely fashion, and I only have Fridays to work with. So when there are no Fridays during the month, it's very difficult, and I have to get those children evaluated and coordinated in ways before they turn three, and if they turn three in December and I only have two Fridays, that means our team has to do the evaluation and do the domains meeting, another time do the evaluation, and then come back together, write the report, to write the IEP if they're eligible, write goals and accommodations, turn it all around in two weeks. And then I have to look that over before a parent sees it, to make sure that everything is wrapped and in its proper place. And then I also have to send some of those reports home to parents.
I've always appreciated your passion. I remember you coming years ago and talking about this program, and I always appreciated how you just, you could just feel that you wanted it to grow and become a greater thing for our community, and it certainly has become that, and your, your leaving has left some pretty big shoes to fill.
Thank you. I agree. And it's sort of like crazy.
I do have to say that it's, you know, it's the quality of the program and the teachers and the, and the support staff, you know, all the way from, you know, speech therapists to the social worker to, you know, our OTs and our PTs. You know, and only as soon as the people who are out.
I'd like to add that you are, I've shown the example of this district, and it's, it's sad that we don't get to see every staff member in this capacity, because I know that they're all as passionate about this as you are, and I've had, you know, fortunate pleasure of getting to work with you for probably a decade in Rotary now and seeing especially your hands-on involvement and pushing forward that accessible playground project. So just, again, thank, thank you on my behalf as well for all of your service to the district, and that will be a hard position to, to see filled. It's hard to imagine doing as good of a job as you. I do have, I'm very curious about the naughty list.
We're off the naughty list, so.
Only as it relates to the program and its future, so we've got, let's say, forty, fifty IEP students come in. And we can't find that number of tuitioning students, or we can't find the staff to hire to make that work out. What, what does it mean to be on the naughty list, and how long can you be naughty before you're? She is naughty first. I'm just using words.
Wait, that was other words that we used. I said, most of the state, they were looking more at fifty, fifty. They want us all at seventy, thirty, but they know it's a challenge. And for some smaller districts, even smaller than us, they're still completely self-contained because they really just didn't have even the setup like we did to bring in tuition students. So, you know, you would just stay on there. We get letters from ISVE, I get letters from the state, and then you have to go to these classes, and at the classes, they were really teaching us how to involve your community, right? How to get more tuition or community kids, or do a preschool for all on ground, which you really haven't got, got able to really qualify for. But, and there are some districts, obviously, who offer tuition, they pay the tuition, right, for community kids to come in. So people do it different ways. There's a big push right now at, at the federal level for bringing more early childhood programs. It's still unfunded. I would hope at some point it's funded. I, I keep thinking maybe they're going to change that, because I know how important it is. And like I said, we're on the naughty list, so we know that the state has a focus on that, but they just haven't really put the money behind it. So, you know, we keep waiting and thinking at some point we would love to take some of our kiddos who are high-risk out there. who are high-risk out there, who maybe couldn't even pay our tuition. And they should be in a quality three to five-year-old programs and be able to do that. So that would be a goal as well, even if it's scholarships or getting some of those students who wouldn't be able to be at any preschool. And to us in kindergarten where they actually know experiences. But how long can we stay on it? We could just stay on it. And I just keep doing all the paperwork.
There are some other districts that are smaller that are on the naughty list and stay on the naughty list because they can't provide that opportunity for their children. But there are some other districts that we know that were on the naughty list. And what they did is they went to their community and said, hey, this is important. Now they offer free preschool for four-year-olds.
Quite unfortunate. Something the unfortunate thing about the naughty list is it actually takes more of your time away from what really should be.
Exactly.
Did they tell you what the state average was? You said that we were better than the state average.
She didn't tell me. She just wrote me an email saying you have done better than the state. And she didn't have the naughty list, but she said, you are now off the ISPE list and you won't hear from us.
Would be rather interesting to know what that state average is.
Yeah, I don't know what it is. We have a lot of data when we watch it on the internet, it's probably one of the best ones.
And students are in either the AM or the PM session? Are there any that are in both, would like to be in both?
Not currently. You know, as we move forward, if I were to stay in this position, that would be something that I would look into. Would be more that three-quarter of a day program for some of our students that are significantly impacted because that's really truly a great way to reach their needs. But that would be something, you know, in the future, definitely would be it. And we also, you know, we do have all-day programming for children that are part of our program and for Oscar Jr., so they are getting all day here.
And that's part of your conversation with parents, is that Oscar Jr. component?
Yep, absolutely.
I mean, we started out small in our Oscar Jr., but as we get more students who are interested, we're hoping to grow that as well. But that's a great option. It's a great option for our staff. But for our tuition-based students who want a full day, first of all, our students, even if they have an IEP, get a full day in the same place. And Oscar Jr. is also a very quality program, without a doubt.
I would like to just let people know that Oscar Jr. worked very closely with us this year while we didn't have the parent support that we needed. And we were able to, they were able to send some parents to our way. And we shared them and they were a great help. That's how we provide the safety and security for our parents and children. So I just would like to let the board know that that, I mean, that's an excellent program and they were very supportive.
Do we have any empirical data that would track our tuition-paying students to see if they really do excel or they're, or those students who didn't have preschool or they had preschool somewhere else?
You know, I know that Chris Fletcher spoke to this. I know that they're doing the kids' assessment in kindergarten. I don't know exactly how you could extract that information, but I think that it could be extracted from that.
That would be interesting to see.
Yeah, we'll be able to do that. It is a, it's an observational kind of assessment. And I'm thinking that, you know, part of that is knowing whether children went to preschool. And so that would be part of the question portion, the teacher portion of it. I haven't seen the kids' assessment, so I'm not sure. But I think, I'm thinking that if that's there, that would probably be a good place to start to extract that information.
Have you taken that seat? That would be, that would be really interesting to see Oscar do.
Anything else?
Mary Jo, just a quick question. And first, also, I'd just like to stress, I think this is a great program and I really applaud the work that you do. And I also have the privilege of knowing you. And I can say this makes a lot more sense on some of the games we've gotten to play at road. I'm starting to put two and two together, picking up from the ends of straws as adults. I wish I had some of this to ball down. Then said, Oscar Jr. and this Little Spartans program, are there, could you, just for my own benefit, help me understand some of the differences and maybe some of the similarities?
Well, it is a play-based program. And I would not be the best person to be doing a comparison and contrast to that because that's not fair, Courtney's not here. She would be able to help you understand that more than I can. But I do know that working with their parent educators and working with the lead teacher, excuse me, they do offer play-based situations. They offer large motor activities. I mean, it's very similar to a preschool program, a high-quality preschool program. What they do exactly, I don't know because I'm not in the room, but I can tell you that the setup is exactly the way we set up our room. And that's based on centers and based on the creative curriculum and the environment that we have to supply to our children. So they.
Is a parent faced with a choice to choose Oscar Jr. or choose Little Spartans?
Not right now because we partner. So if you, if you join Oscar Jr., you pay to be in that, then you come to our program.
Okay.
So it's like a duly, duly enrolled, but, so we do work with them very closely.
Oscar Jr. really truly is our daycare program. But both my kids have gone through Oscar and Oscar Jr. and Little Spartans. So, you know, shameless plug here, but, but, you know, our lead teacher with Oscar Jr. works very closely with our early childhood staff. And so they are able to do some curriculum pieces with it too. But that's not the sole purpose of it, but hopefully they're not stumping Courtney's toes. But, so, but yes, they, I mean, they work hand-in-hand. But Oscar Jr. really is a daycare piece that are going to school at that time.
So you said, I think Tuesdays, Thursdays, nine to 11:30 or one to 3:30 with a time slot? Does Oscar Jr. dovetail with those times?
Little Spartans runs Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, four days a week.
Four days a week.
So we have an AM session and a PM session. So with the Oscar Jr. program, when you go, okay, this year is a little different, of course, as everything is. So they, our Oscar Jr. students only come in the afternoon. That's the way they can support us with their parent educator support. So they're, all the Oscar Jr. kids come into our program. So that's how we get our tuition, some of our tuition-based kids this year. Last year, when we first started out, it really didn't matter if you were in the AM or PM session. So we chose some of the kids in AM and some of the children from Oscar Jr. in the PM. And we just divided them up. So you would spend, if you were in the Oscar Jr. program, you would spend either your morning there and then your afternoon in the Little Spartans program. Or you would spend your afternoon or your morning there or the morning in ours program and the afternoon in Oscar Jr. And then they would remain there until their parents came and picked them up because it is a daycare situation.
And last, I'll say on this because we're kind of building up to, does the Oscar Jr. component then satisfy the 70/30 requirement for IEP to non?
No. But that's a really good idea.
That would be our daycare part of that, but that would be awesome.
Just, it just can't happen from a regulatory standpoint then, or just?
They're really two separate programs. So right now, parents could choose to be in Oscar Jr. all day if they wanted to and not even be in our program. Because they really are two separate, but we collaborate and work hand-in-hand together.
Okay. So if push comes to shove, maybe that could be something to satisfy that requirement to avoid the naughty section?
Maybe it could.
Maybe it could. All right?
I think it would be nice to have.
Oh, yes, I would love to introduce the staff. So I have Megan Morelli, she's our early childhood teacher. Thank you. I have Neely Berger, she's just my boss.
My boss too.
Lynn's boss. Jen Camp, she's our social worker. Laurel Copeland, she's one of our early childhood teachers. And Heather Porter, our speech and language pathologist.
It speaks volumes.
So thank you all for showing up.
It speaks volumes that you're all here. It really shows your passion for the program as well as your support of these two people. Tells a lot.
There's so much I want to say. We're all like replaying.
You guys are awesome.
Mary Jo's done an amazing job. She does way more than she's even talking about right now. But it's an amazing program to work for. And I, can I say one thing? Just really quickly, I just want to share the difference too between Oscar Jr. and Little Spartans is that in the Little Spartans preschool program, we are assessing students three times a year based on those Illinois early learning standards. And that's not something that's required of the Oscar Jr. daycare program. Since you have to remember too, that in the Little Spartans program, we are using those standards to help guide our instruction, to help prepare those students for kindergarten. So that is a big difference between the two placements. I just wanted to share that.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much and.
Thank you.
Yes, have a great retirement.
You will.
Where's the first place you traveled?
Yeah.
Uh, New Orleans.
That's a great place to be.
And then California. And then Florida.
Been there four times, but you know it's one of them.
New Orleans.
Oh, I thought you said Norway.
No, New Orleans.
Have a long, happy and healthy retirement. Come have your visit. You can come and address us anytime.
I think, thank you.
Thanks.
The last slide, it's part of this, it's really mine and it's a recommendation in the past. But I need to explain this any further, you guys. You know, Mary Jo and Lynn did a great job explaining the program if we've gone through the detail. That role has changed. I think Chris's, your question is a really good one, how's that changed over the years? And Mary Jo did an excellent job in describing that. As a result of that, because of the work that that position does, really it's not instructional, it really is an administrative type of position. Because we're under this transition, it's an opportunity to review that. And we are recommending after reviewing that, having some internal discussion, we did talk to the district's attorneys just to make sure we're on the right path. We're going to recommend that that's, that that becomes the administrative position because of the roles and some of the reasons I put there, especially supervising and assigning teachers, working with related service providers, parent educators, so on and so forth. So just want to, that's the kind of tail end of that presentation. I think that's all I was qualified to talk about. Okay, that takes us to 7.02, which is a return to learn update. And as I've been past, I just want to start with a little bit of data. This is region one, all-time test positivity. I feel really let down. That was an awesome presentation. Now I'm going to talk about health metrics and it is what it is. Huge spike again in November. Saw, we see where that's going over time. We're close to the 8% line, but we're under 5% right now. It's a good trend. Cal County really has reflected that, not exactly, but very close. The Cal County test positivity is actually, this is the most recent data as of this afternoon. May 21st is the most recent date. That seven-day rolling average is at 7.4. If you look at those dates over the last 10 days or so, it's really fluctuated a little bit. But I would draw your attention to the number tested as well as the number of positive tests on those days. So we're not seeing the consistency in the number tested on a given day, nor are we seeing, I take that back, that there is some consistency in the positive tests, but the number of tests performed each day can be really different, from 172, 158 to 607 over the couple of days. So that really plays with the seven-day rolling average. When you look at that over a longer period of time, we really mirror this trend in our region. And also pretty closely follows the state trend. So for the last year, 15 months, we have persevered. We've gone through some really difficult, challenging times. Mary Jo and Lynn talked about that at the Little Spartans program. That really goes for everywhere. I picked this slide because it's a student there at the top of the peak and those are the ones who've benefited from the hard work that we've done. So now we kind of find ourselves a crossroad. And tonight I'm going to talk about what next year is going to look like. So for a while, we've been kind of standing in the road. I offered a gift card, a Starbucks gift card, if you can name the movie.
Castaway.
Perfect, you got it. We find ourselves at a crossroads, kind of like Tom Hanks's character in Castaway. Persevered, survived, and, you know, what is, what is the future going to look like? So I also found this quote, which I thought was really important to share. "But in the road is not the end of the road unless you fail to make the turn." So as we continue to look towards next year, I think it's really important, and we've talked about how we can utilize the experiences that we've gained this year to benefit us this next year, but also in the future, to make that next turn. So in other words, we've survived, but we have to look at the 21-22 school year as more than just the opportunity to return to normal. So I had a conversation about this. Again, this conversation with Chris Carlson. Recently, we're not really returning to normal. The normal really isn't normal anymore. It's just moving forward. And I think it's important to stress that the future is an opportunity to thrive based on experiences that we've had. So that's our, that's going to be our goal. Health metrics continue to be stable and/or decreasing. All signs point to Illinois moving back to Phase 5 on June 11th, which gets a little bit closer every day. Planning for the 21-22 school year is continued with the best information available, although we know that there will be changes. I'll skip down to the bottom bullet point. Expect revised guidance from IDPH and ISBE for the 21-22 school year regarding face masks, social distancing, and social distancing in Florida. I just want to stress that I anticipate some change. And that doesn't mean that they're going to wipe it out. That doesn't mean that the changes are going to be significant necessarily. I just expect some change in that guidance. Both of those entities, hopefully they release that jointly here sooner than later. I'll offer another gift card if you can get the data out and right.
Want to play the lottery? Got some dates?
We all know how changes in guidance can really impact our plan. We've experienced that throughout the current school year. One recent example, although things have been kind of quiet here, is one recent example that has kind of thrown us for a loop. Previously, the State Board of Education recommended remote learning for students who are at risk of severe illness or students who live in a household with an individual who is at risk for severe illness. So for the last several weeks, we have operated with that guidance in mind. Last Wednesday, the 19th, ISBE approved a recommendation for remote learning for students who were ineligible for the vaccine. I'm going to pause here for a second. Students who are ineligible for the vaccine right now are only students under 11 or under 12 to get in there. So we're talking about K5 and then some transition to the middle school. But of those students, it's those students, that group, who are also quarantined, not or, it can. So that really narrows down that, that group. And that just became, that was just approved last Wednesday. We do not have the revised official guidance from ISBE in terms of how to interpret that, how to apply that, something that we're still waiting for. But the resolution that was passed was very clear. And we're using, I'm using my best judgment, working with the admin team and the staff for the recommendations I'm going to present to them. So what does the 21-22 school year look like? Schools will be open five days a week, Monday through Friday, for all students. Schools will implement a full daily schedule at all, at all levels. So I put early childhood to 12. We know that early childhood has an AM and a PM session, but those will be full-length. Every school day, every session that a student attends will be full-length. Remote learning will only be available for students who qualify based on ISBE guidance. And remote learning will only be available for approved remote learners on a short-term basis for the duration of the quarantine in accordance with IDPH and CHT. So effectively, what's happened is that we really don't have remote learners anymore. We don't have long-term remote learners, we don't have long-term remote students anymore. The only remote students are the students who are out on quarantine. Some of those students will be ineligible for the vaccine and out because of, because of being quarantined. Some of those will be older students who are eligible for the vaccine, maybe didn't get it for whatever reason, we respect that. But then maybe become a close contact and have to quarantine also. So really what this boils down to is how are we going to support quarantined students moving forward? Whether they meet the ISBE criteria for quarantine, you know, short-term learners and short-term remote learners in quarantine? Or just a student who is eligible and happens to be quarantined? Remote learners or quarantined learners, maybe is a better way to describe that, will be supported by a licensed teacher or substitute teacher. Here's what that means. We'll treat these situations very similar to the way we've approached what we call homebound situations. So there is, there's language in the school code that identifies a homebound student as any student who, because of the medical reason, has to be home for 10 or more days. Has to be out of school for 10 or more days. For a homebound situation, that has to be signed off on, approved by a doctor. This won't necessarily follow that. We won't give doctors notes for students who be quarantined. We have guidance on that. We have guidance on that, although that could change, we'll continue to follow that. But when a student is quarantined, we're going to treat that very similar to a homebound situation across the board, all levels, K5, 6, 8, and 9, 12. So we'll assign a licensed teacher or a substitute teacher, which is what we've done in the past, to support those students. So when students go into quarantine, a separate remote teacher will be identified, who will work with that student, and act as kind of a liaison between the student and their family and the school. If materials need to pass back and forth, that's something that that person will be able to do. The difference now, though, is that in the past, a lot of times, homebound teachers were taking part copies of things and delivering those to a student's home. That's not necessarily what we have to do any longer. You know, the Bitmoji classrooms that they're using across the district. The Canvas opportunity, Canvas portal learning system at the high school level. Students who are out on quarantine can still access those resources. So those remote teachers will still touch base with those students, they'll check in with those students, but they won't have to provide the level of instruction or support that they've had to do in the past necessarily, because that student can still stay in touch with the classroom teacher. They'll be out of the building, so they'll be working independently to a great degree. However, they can email the classroom teacher still, they can call and try to get in touch with the classroom teacher that way, or now they can set up a Google link with the classroom teacher during their office hours, or when they're available, to ask questions about content if they're working with their home. We know that at a maximum, that's going to be 14 days right now. That guidance could take it down to 10, could take it down to seven, in which case a student is missing one week, as opposed to a week and a half or two weeks. So that new guidance from ISBE really has kind of changed the game in terms of supporting those students. As opposed to a remote teacher working with students on a semester basis, we could still use IDS if that's a necessity. It's probably much less necessary than we thought it was before. We will have a licensed teacher or licensed substitute teacher acting as that remote teacher for those students who are out on quarantine. I'm going to pause there for a second before I go. Any questions about that?
Go across all levels, potentially?
Remote teachers will work.
High school students quarantined, middle school, are they all visiting with the same teacher?
Not necessarily. So remote teachers will work with K5, remote teachers will work with elementary students. Middle school, identify homebound instructors to work with, or remote instructors to work with those kids in grade 6 through 8. High school will do the same. Now, as the year goes on, if that quarantine number is small, there may be a little carryover, middle school, high school, elementary to middle school. Some of the teachers that we, the substitute teachers that we've used in the past are used to doing that, so they kind of have a routine down, and are used to working with students at different building levels, whether they're in grade 11. So really, what we want to do is try to isolate them at elementary, middle school, or high school, first and foremost. But as the year starts and this guidance changes, if you have that flexibility to take advantage of it, but really, at the outset, we want to try to keep it at high school, middle school, or K5.
So is there really no scenario where you ever will learn, unless it's a long-term illness that is being had?
Yeah, so I'd love to say it's going to fall into these categories really neatly. We know that that doesn't happen. And what we would ask is that, if there's a unique situation, parents contact the main office where your student is in school. The administrators will have a conversation with them about that, not the counselors or, I think, the health staff. If there's a situation where a student needs to be out longer term, and we can document that in the position or whatever, we could still look at IDS, the long-term solution at middle school and high school, elementary. And then we'd have to revisit, and can remote teachers support that student longer term? I would expect that that number still can be very low. So hopefully manageable, but.
Those would still be based on, like you said, the ID method, that that's going to be a semester, you can't just jump in and out of that.
Yeah.
Hopefully, there's not a lot of that, because there's not really the opportunity to opt out.
Once you've started in IDS, you really need to finish it. Could they finish it by participating in that class in the high school? You know, if circumstances change again, to the library or other ways, absolutely. But they would need to finish that course and enter the semester, then we can give them a hold of that class.
Parents already have the opt-out option for their student in general.
Oh, yeah, just to be a remote student?
Yeah.
No, not be longer.
You're not using credit recovery at all anymore, or using a high school program?
Like APACs or other programs like that. IBS really?
I know, I'm telling, I'm saying credit recovery can start to be, you know, it doesn't have to be specific to a semester.
You know, IBS has rolling, admission, enrollment dates, so that's kind of nice, but once you start, you have to finish. Now, you can end early, so if a student, you know, their circumstances change, and they want to get that classroom sooner, they're absolutely lucky to do that. But IBS will be the focus, not some of the other credit recovery programs we've used in the past.
Is there a reason why?
Just felt like it was a little bit more vigorous.
Can we use both?
No, there's nothing that would prevent us from doing that if the situation developed, because we have that experience. IBS will be the go-to, but those other programs are still going to be available if the kid is right. Other questions?
Can we kind of dive in that, how does that student, teacher, or that liaison teacher really work? I mean, you've got, and obviously, we're talking about what quarantine looks like now, who knows what it looks like when school actually starts, but you probably get it at a max of 10 days, not really 14 would be for quarantine, but weekends, really 10 days max of school time.
Yeah.
You know, a teacher's notified that their two students are close contact, they're both being sent home for 10 days. Is, what communication can parents expect? And what can, like, how is that going to work? Does that come from the teacher? Is that going to come from this random person that they don't know?
So once the main office knows about that and is notified, they'll go to contact and identify a remote teacher to work with that student. Kind of give that remote teacher some of the background information, you know, grade level, classes are taken, things like that. And then that person, that teacher will reach out to the family directly. Make a phone call, introduce themselves. My name is Mr. Wilder, I'm going to be the remote teacher for Sean Wilder during, you know, the next two weeks, or whatever that time period is. I'm going to act as a liaison, kind of explain what that person's role is, set up time to drop things off if needed, set up time, you know, regular time for the phone calls, set up emails if it's an older student, using their Supermore email address. You could also set up Google meets, you know, they'll have the capacity to do that, so they don't necessarily have to go to that student's house. And in the past, homebound teachers, sometimes they've gone to students' houses, sometimes they've met at a kind of a neutral place, like a public library or something like that. They wouldn't necessarily need to do that if that student has their Chromebook at home, they've got the live on internet. Everything could be done virtually, as opposed to, you know, a person or a phone line that's been done in the past. And then that person would check in with that student on a regular basis. Are you addressing your math? Do you have any questions for science, you know, things like that? So regular check-ins, and then also relating back and communicating back with classroom teachers. Mr. Wilder, Sean's lagging a little bit behind, so this week, you're going to need to work on math or whatever the place may be. So, and that changes a little bit, you know, in a developmental way as the students get older, but that's what that experience is like until that student has completed their quarantine and they're cleared and ready to come back to school.
It was almost like the usual, it's a plan at that point. Obviously, that could be, you know, five hours a day or anything like that, but they're really going to work with that itself, trying to get that, and probably what's left for this for the day, and so, just depending on a lot of different factors there.
Yeah.
I could probably, I mean, if it was two kids in the same class, elementary level, could potentially do it at the same time.
Absolutely. That would make a lot of sense, saying, you know, at the high school, middle school level. Middle school, you know, students are placed on a team, so they have a lot of the common teachers. High school's a little bit different, but there may still be some crossover. So both students, you know, happen to be in Mr. Doty's class, so that teacher can work with both of them at the same time. Nothing would prevent them from setting up a Google meet with three or four students at a time, if they're in the same classroom or course, yeah. Again, I think that one of the silver linings is just that we've got some capabilities that we didn't have before that now we can take advantage of.
I can imagine this looks a little bit different based on grade level. So I'm assuming that there's no just standard across K through 12, with students out, you know, as far as who's responsible for the content for that student. Is it the, they're missing their third grade class, is the third grade teacher the one responsible for providing the content? And the remote teacher is just more supervisory, making sure they're staying on task, answering questions, those sort of things? Or is it more, no, that remote teacher really has the responsibility to find out from the regular teacher where they were at in that class, and then pull in materials? I mean, do you get what I'm saying?
I do.
Is the teacher whose class they're missing who's pushing material to the remote teacher? Or is the remote teacher pulling it in, or am I completely?
Now, the classroom teacher, so one of the things we want to make sure is if that student's off of quarantine, they go right back into the class, and it's a very smooth transition. So they pick up exactly where the rest of the class is at that point. So the classroom teacher, and this is exactly what happened during homebound situations previously, the classroom teacher is still responsible for all the content. Now, it may not be handouts that get dropped off at home anymore. It may be posted on Canvas, or Google Classroom, or Bitmoji Classroom. Classroom teacher is still responsible for that, because ultimately, that's still, that teacher still is responsible for that student. But that remote teacher, you might think of it more of a, kind of as a guided tutor, and they really individualize that plan to that student, because you're right, at different grade levels, it looks much different. They receive that content from the teacher, or have access to that content from their classroom teacher, but then they take on that responsibility of working with the student directly, so that the regular classroom teacher can continue to move forward with their class, just focusing on that class, as opposed to trying to do both. They continue to move forward. That remote teacher, that guided tutor type of teacher keeps that other student up to date so that when their quarantine is over, they jump right back in, and it's as smooth as possible.
We're actually offering even more than the kids who are out for four days with chickenpox, or, you know, you never talk to your teacher during that time, you just got work sent home.
You're exactly right.
Yeah.
Do we know what kind of workload that assistant teacher is going to be facing with this? I mean, how often are we supposed to, I guess, from the standpoint of a parent with a student, would that student have pretty close and immediate access to that tutor? Or is that tutor split among, you know, 30, 40 students?
Yeah, we certainly want to keep that number down to a very manageable number. I would say 30, 40 obviously is way too high, but it's a matter of how many students, you know, kind of getting into the next school year, and how many students are on quarantine at a certain time, how many of them might be in the same class. But we want to make sure that that's still a manageable load for that teacher, so that, like you referenced, the parents, the student at home, they're not in a place where they need help, they're reaching out to that teacher, and they're not available, or it's taking them a day or two to get back to them. We want to keep that class, that workload manageable, so that they're available to the families, to the students, and it's manageable for them too. So we want to keep that number low, but balance, you know, how much is reasonable, and how much are people able to do, as opposed to not giving them too much. And, you know, we've got substitute teachers that we're able to utilize this year. It's been a trouble early last year, but I think as the vaccinations have become available and the tests, the metrics continue to go down. Our hope is that some of the substitute teachers that weren't interested in coming into the building last year are a bit more comfortable next year. So we hope that that group increases a little bit. We're still far enough away that it's hard to gauge exactly what that looks like right now. Other questions before I move on? Okay. So that's kind of what remote learning will look like. The next item was daily bell schedule, and this kind of has to do with transportation, as well as a variety of other challenges that we've talked about and kicked around for the last several months. We are going to stick with the standard schedule. Elementary will start last, start at 8:45 and go until 3:30. Middle school will start at 7:45 and go to 2:30. High school will go, start at 7:50 and dismiss at 2:35. That changed the day at all three levels. So middle school and high school actually lost a little bit of time. Elementary school is a little bit longer than it was previously. One of the benefits is that those days are now uniform, so the day at every school is the exact same length. Instruction and working with students at every level looks a little bit different, so it's hard to equate that, but there is some balance now in terms of the length of the day. There's a little bit more time at the elementary school, that's been added to recess and a little bit into the instruction in the classroom too. So a little bit of a change. This was not ideal. I wouldn't say that we had 100% buy-in from everybody on this. It's the happy meeting that will allow us to run transportation, get students back and forth, but then, how many instruction and all the other activity the students participate in. The last bullet point there on this slide is that all indications are that activities will go on as planned for next school year. So all the indications from IHSA, IESA, as well as the conversations around conferences at both the high school and middle school level, we're planning to implement a regular activities calendar next year.
Have the bus numbers changed as a result of?
The limit? They have not, so it's still set at 50.
So that's, the schedule's working with that limitation?
Yeah. Yeah, the chairman was very involved in the process and part of the conversation. So it does allow us to still follow that COVID guidance, if you start next year.
They loosen it up, it'll be.
It'll be easier yet. Right now, easier looks pretty good.
Yeah, yeah, it's a little bit easier.
Steve, at the last meeting, you alluded to the fact that perhaps we revisit the schedule again next year. Is that still the plan? It just wasn't what we wanted to bet off right now?
Absolutely. So we'll continue to look at the schedule, and again, you know, one of the things we talked about the last meeting was reimagining what the school day looks like at all three levels. So we'll continue to have that conversation next year, kind of take our time to wade into that. This is the schedule for next year. I like consistency, and the families and staff like consistency. But as we have that conversation, if it makes sense to adjust this a little bit for the 22, 23 school year, certainly we've been doing that. I guess I would tell everybody, and I've tried to be clear when I've had these conversations, when we have that conversation, if we recommend a change, at that point, it really needs to be a long-term decision. So coming out of COVID and making this transition, I feel like, you know, making this decision is reasonable, and the potential, the potential for change is always there. But as we have those conversations and talk about the research and what makes sense for our students, any recommendation to change for those schedules or any other schedules would be a long-term decision, just again, to get back to consistency. But we will continue to have that conversation next year. Any other questions before I move on? Not done yet. PLCs have been an important part of what the school district has done for quite a while, for at least 10 years. That will be a real focus next year for the 21-22 school year. We talked about the five questions that our PLCs ask and discuss. Research supports PLCs as one of the most effective initiatives in any school district for continuous improvement. They were absolutely critical during this current school year. Collaboration among staff for planning, for planning curriculum, across grade levels, departments. We want to continue to provide time for our staff to do that. And one of the things that we'll do this summer, again, making that transition to next year, is offer some PLC training again. We've offered that before. It's voluntary, it's optional. We're going to offer that training again, just as kind of a refresher for staff who have been here for a while, but also training for new staff that did get a chance to go through that previously. Based on feedback from the administrative team and the staff, I'm also recommending a weekly late start, every Thursday morning, to provide time for those PLCs to meet across the district. A common PLC time will facilitate collaboration across the district. We provide that time currently, kind of at different times during the day, the elementary school, the middle school, and the high school. So one of the things we've been doing is creating one common time, where all of the elementary teachers have PLC time, all of the middle school teachers have PLC time at the same time, and all the high school teachers have PLC time at the same time. Yeah, if there wants, if there needs to be collaboration across grade levels or across departments, there's the opportunity to do that. If the sixth grade teachers want to have a conversation here, they can do that. If the science teachers at the middle school want to be on one of those Thursdays, they can do that. We did realize that high school, middle school schedules are pretty similar. So middle school, high school, there's the opportunity for collaboration there among PLCs. PLCs also. Because the elementary starts a little bit later, that would be challenging. So they'll have an opportunity at K-five level to be meeting across buildings or, you know, almost different grade levels. Now, high school, middle school really has the better opportunity to, to meet across both of those buildings. That means that buses will run forty minutes later on Thursday mornings so that teachers have an opportunity to get into the school, have those meetings before the school day starts. But we know that that is going to be a burden on some of the families in our community. They need to get to work, they need their students to be at school at a specific time. Oscar will, will run and, you know, have a full Oscar program in the fall. It will run on those days and it will run those extra forty minutes so that those students are supervised before they go to class. What we'll also do is provide supervision for other families who need to get their student there at seven forty-five at the middle school or at eight forty-five at the elementary school. If they need to get their, their student there then, they don't need them to be there earlier to take advantage of Oscar, they just need their student dropped off at eight forty-five, we're going to provide supervision to do that. And we've talked about how to do that using some of the existing staff within the district, non-teaching staff like paraprofessionals who are already going to be in the building at those times and will be able to help supervise students so that students need to be dropped off, we can facilitate that. We will ask parents through a survey, if you can keep your student home until they need to go to school at forty or probably forty-five minutes later so that PLC time can end and get back to their classrooms. If you can keep them home on those days, we, you know, it would help us out. If there's an older student that drives and they can just go later, we'd appreciate that. If the student gets a ride from somebody who goes later, we'd appreciate that. But if you need your student to be there at the regular start of the day, we're going to provide supervision for families to do that. We'll provide a survey, put a survey out, barring any objection, put a survey out as soon as we can in order to kind of judge how many families need that so we can start the planning for that. There will be a cost to that just because we have supervisors who are staying longer in Oscar, but that's six dollars per student is just about half of the cost for morning Oscar program, right? So it's a reduced cost, but we will have staff that we are paying for and cover that cost to some extent. So there will be a minimum cost for that. We'll get that survey out with information about that to families so that they can take a look at that and start planning for the fall. We know that that's a change, but I think the PLC time for our staff all at the same time is, is very valuable. We, we learned that this year. And we, we also kind of want to respect that that's going to create a challenge for families. Give them as much time as we can the entire summer to start thinking about how to plan for that, but also remind them that if you need them to be here on time, we're going to provide supervision. It'll be unstructured supervision, so there won't be activities planned or things like that, especially with those students who are just dropped off at the beginning of the day. Oscar still has some activities, not necessarily like, you know, what you see in the classroom, but we'll be able to provide that supervision so students can get dropped off on time before the school day starts. I'm going to take a break here and ask for any questions.
Supervision not by any instructional teacher?
Correct.
So they all, whether they're teaching English or art or PE or music or whatever, all have PLC time?
Every teacher who is providing instruction have PLC at the time at that time.
And then are, are you using teaching stations for the supervision portion or is it like, you know, a cafeteria at the high school or the library or?
We're going to, we're going to take advantage of large spaces first, and the cafeteria at the high school is a perfect one, commons area here is a perfect one. You can get a large group of students in there, supervise them all easily. Gym spaces may need to be made available. So we'll have those conversations too about where those students go, libraries, that might be a possibility. We may get to a place where we need a couple of classrooms, and if that happens, then we're worth the teachers to, to, we don't want to kick them out of their classroom, but if they're meeting in another location, classroom space is available, we may need to use that. Really depends on what that number looks like and how much space we need. So we've had some kind of initial conversation about that, but what we really need is, is this data from the survey, you know, that what kind of space we need.
I'm just thinking, if library, commons areas make a lot of sense, can you get to a large art room or a gym or a music room where they have a set of time prior to that first classroom?
Yeah.
Then you get into common.
Yeah. And we want to stay away from that. You know, other classrooms, you make a really good point, other classrooms don't need that set up. We'll take advantage of those first, but those would be the last choice. You know, we'll look at the, those large commons spaces first.
Buses are going to run forty-five minutes later.
Yeah, yes.
So then in order for a parent to take advantage of being able to have their child here at the earlier time, they'd have to make arrangements to have the child here outside of Oscar.
They would have to do that, yeah.
For somebody that's relying on Oscar.
When the school day starts, we're required to provide transportation, so that's what we'll do when the school day starts a little bit later on those days, but you're right. If parents need their students, their students to be at school at the start, they will need to get them there somehow, whether it's themselves, maybe just walking distance, maybe it's a ride, you know, whatever it could be. But again, we want to give them that time to plan for the spring or the summer so that they can make arrangements to do that.
Steve, try to mail please. On the six dollars per student, that's per, per week?
For that day. It's a, so for Oscar, correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, it'd be per week because it's just one time a week.
Can you help me understand if we're using staff that's already there and already paid for six dollars is covering?
Yeah, sorry.
We talked about this really, go ahead.
Yeah. So our paraprofessionals that would be assisting us, their, their day would already be starting, so I mean, they would already be on their, their contract, but our Oscar staff are paid hourly, so they would have to stay an hour later than they typically would, so we would need to cover those costs that staff stayed later.
And the elementary?
What's, what's the ratio then of supervision to students? I guess where I'm trying to wrap my head around this is I'm thinking, all right, six dollars, not even for an hour, but let's call it an hour. And let's say I got twenty students per supervisor, that's a hundred and twenty dollars, right? When that's right, which is more than we pay our subs or about what we pay our subs? I'm just, I'm trying to understand how a whole day of a sub is equivalent to forty minutes of watching some students before school.
So we don't know that that ratio is quite yet, is what we need to know, but kind of using your, your example, which may or may not be you far off, that, that time ends up, it's not just one person, it's, could be four or five Oscar staff who are, who are there for that day, so we need to start to add that time up. Now, we think that that's what we need to make it work budget-wise to break even. The other, the other option would be to be willing to potentially take a loss on that piece to not require, if that makes sense. So, so when that conversation was, we talked about this several times, when we had that conversation, we just want to cover our costs to get through that, and that's, that's the estimate that we've got to do that. Until we really know what that ratio looks like, it's, it's hard to say exactly what we're making per Oscar supervisor. That's our estimate at this point.
I guess I'd like to see when we've got maybe a better estimate from surveys as to how many students are, we're going to need to cover, just how that, that cost breaks through.
Yeah, this, 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 the invitation of having twenty-five staff members from Oscar, it's an additional staff, an additional ten staff members and maybe coming out. So it's, I think about, I mean, that's another cost.
Of Oscar staff? The Oscar staff? I guess, I, I guess I thought that they were much lower on the pay scale, but just trying to again, figure out how many students one staff member can cover if it's unstructured?
Yeah, it's one to ten, so DCFS, I mean, he's what we have to have for a student to have issue for our DCS program, so it's one to ten.
So an Oscar supervisor is sixty dollars an hour? Or a hundred and twenty thousand for the year is an annual wage?
Sorry, I guess I'm not understanding.
Well, one supervisor, ten students, ten students paying six dollars for forty minutes of supervision, sixty dollars an hour? No?
They don't make sixty dollars an hour.
Say what?
They don't make sixty dollars an hour.
Well, that's why I'm trying to figure out why if we need to hire one for every ten students, we need to collect sixty dollars if that's our added cost is to hire supervisor.
I guess that's our, our estimate, face time kind of projection right now. Yeah, you know, we'll put the survey out, gather that feedback, and so I guess the, the other question is, I would love to keep that number as low as possible, but we also have to break even just to cover our costs. We're not letting the profit off that, we're just letting it cover our costs. So if the board is willing to entertain not charging that fee or reducing it, and I wouldn't recommend doing that until we've got a better idea of what that number looks like, just need to know that that, that margin gets smaller, that potentially, but, you know, I know that Courtney Walls, our Oscar director, and Nicole talked about this for quite a bit, and I, I trust that number, but I think maybe we better wait and make a final decision on that or, or any decision to change that until we've got that survey data, see how many students we're talking about.
Yeah, I'm, I'm in favor of breaking even, I'm just having trouble understanding how that number, what, what cost I'm missing that's not going in, it's going to that number that I'm not accounting for.
Steve, let me just ask to, to build up that, is the cost for Oscar for a student, is that where that number is being derived from on a basis of forty minutes? So is it, you know, whatever the parent's paying for, for that enrollment? If you broke it down into a forty-minute denomination, does it equate to six dollars? Is maybe that hour arriving at that six dollars?
I, I believe so, is that right?
Does that make sense to me? Because I understand there's more than just the variable cost of labor, there's overhead costs associated with it. So if I was going to come up with a six dollar cost, I would take what a parent's paying for Oscar per hour collectively over the course of the year, and then I break it down to an, to an hourly rate adjusted for forty minutes, and I imagine that, that would be how I'd rationalize the six dollars. Does that sound like maybe what?
So can I pay twelve dollars now for up to an hour and a half of care?
So twelve dollars for an hour and a half of care?
Yeah.
Okay, so that, I mean, I'm not a math whiz, but that adjusts to just about six bucks, somewhere in that neighborhood, right? Forty-five minutes, forty minutes, six? But I know at least in the afternoon, there's snacks included and other, other activities.
There are other costs that, just aside from just labor, you're right, and the, the external life and things like that, snacks and equipment, they, these equipment, the activities are different than they would be in the classroom, but there's some structure there, yeah.
I'd just be happy seeing the rate, as I've been off of the overall cost of Oscar broken down to minutes before I'd see it just based solely on labor, while I would add that program is running at a revenue positive.
Yeah, I mean, we typically, we don't, we don't base our rates off of the hourly rate per se, you know, not like, like a home daycare you would. It's just always been a certain dollar amount, so you don't say based on hours, because really you can drop your kids off at any point, and you can pick them up at any point in the afternoon too, so kids are there at different times. So it's really hard for us to say, your kid was only here an hour, we're only charging him this, you get the whole entire program for this, not like.
Much more little to you.
Yeah.
A handful of, a handful of questions here. Well, first, I, I like that we are taking, taking COVID and not just saying, okay, look, we need to make sure that we get everything back to how it was, like, and just trying to just go back to what we were doing because we want to go back to what we were doing. So I think it's great that we're looking at all options and things like that, so I'm definitely supportive of this. This will obviously be probably the biggest change for parents in the district, and especially at the elementary level because obviously those students can supervise themselves. When a parent sees this, they're going to immediately think of their phone situation. So a parent who has to drop children off and take advantage of six dollars a student, if they've got three students at the elementary level, you essentially just have a over six-hundred-dollar bill for something that they were, but now blindsided with, and then know that's going to prompt a lot of questions from parents. So first, I guess, and again, I'm super supportive of this, I can, I'm fine, but I know, I just got to put some stuff on the table because we'll get some questions on it, of course.
Yeah, I understand.
So for these mornings, these are required, all staff most of the time, it's not an optional thing and things like that. In regards to, I guess I would like to see a board meeting at some point, you know, half the school, half the school year in to say, hey, look, here's what this time's being used for, here's specifically what we've gone over, this is the benefits we're seeing from it, here's, you know, here's how we can use that time even more efficiently and things like that. So if that is a possibility, I, I would be all for hearing that as well.
Absolutely. And really, that comes best from the building levels.
Sure.
So when, when they, when we get reports from each of the buildings as the year goes on, that's something I would ask them to do, including your presentation, how that PLC time has been used and how it's been beneficial.
Sure. We stay up there that buses are running forty minutes later, so I'm going to assume then school starts forty minutes later, so I can just subtract forty minutes to whatever the start time is at my individual building.
Right.
So if I, let's say I drop my kids off in, in a elementary level, I drop them off at eight forty-five is the start time. At eight forty-five, how early can I get them there on the forty-minute day without having to put them out? I mean, you don't want kids walking in at eight forty-five. I know there have been times where yours truly has dropped children off at four, eight forty-six and looked upon as the worst possible thing.
However, I'm hypothetical that that happens. You bring up a really good point. And, and there's always some supervision before school.
Yeah.
Buses are dropped off a little earlier, parents are dropping off a little earlier. So these are, those are bell scheduled times that I talked about earlier, but buses will drop off a little earlier than that, parents can drop off students a little earlier than that. So you're right, we don't want them walking in at eight forty-five or seven forty-five. They can show up a little bit earlier and that's part of what transportation will do is work that out with each of the building levels, just to, to make sure that they, they know what that window of time is between when the school day starts and how early they can be dropping off the students.
And is that going to cause any issue then? So I, I guess I could foresee a situation of, you know, nine twenty-five start, I want to get my kids there ten, maybe fifteen minutes early, right around that range, you've got more of an increase of kids being dropped off, a bus shows up early, is there a supervision issue for that ten, fifteen minutes then? Because now you've got people, you've got, you know, parents that need to get to jobs, trying to drop these kids off, is that, do you foresee that?
Oh, absolutely, yeah. And, and that's part of what each building level will facilitate, you know, how, when one of those students come in, how much capacity do we have based on the, the survey numbers? How many can we expect that need to get dropped off at regular time? How much supervision do we have? How much can we add? And then building principals will communicate that out to parents at the beginning of the school year, and if we have to, we may need to adjust this a little bit as the school year gets going, but that'll be something that gets communicated to parents. The school day starts at, at nine twenty-five, let's say, on those days, you would say nine thirty for a kind of a round number and get teacher time to get from the PLC to the classroom.
Sure.
On those days, students can't be dropped off any sooner than nine twenty or whatever the case may be. Now, we all know that you can say nine twenty and you're still going to get nine fifteen and, so principals know that.
No school wants everyone showing up exactly at nine twenty.
Exactly at the same time. So that's, that's something that we've worked with for, for years, principals are used to that, and they'll factor that into Thursdays as well as every day at the school day start.
And I think, I'm trying to remember that, but I mean, this can be a foreign concept to parents that have only lived in simply one, in simply one, to my house, and that's something that best people could do, so I'm correcting you on. This is done at other districts. This is something that is more well-known out there. I mean, not every district does it, but it, it is something that's.
Yeah.
We've talked about it, I just want to put it out there.
We did this in a former district where I, where I worked. It wasn't weekly, it was a little bit less than that, but those meetings were used, and it was a high school, so we use those meetings for department meetings on, you know, on one time, and then it was a whole factor of the meetings at others. This is really prior to PLCs, you know, that becoming more popular and more commonplace. But you're absolutely right, this is, we're not breaking ground here, this is something that other school districts are doing. That research has been out for, you know, ten, twenty, twenty-five years, and a lot of schools have implemented that, not everybody, but a lot of schools have implemented this already, yeah.
No, I think it's great, and especially if that's the, obviously the, clearly the moment of feedback is that it's been productive, so we want to keep that as something that they bring into twenty twenty, twenty-three, two, school year. So, yeah, I'm all for it. I mean, it'll be a change, but, I mean, something to get used to, right?
Yeah, that's, that's the goal. Yeah, high school has been.
Almost putting in zero.
Still have zero, I guess.
Does it, is there a reason why we're starting forty minutes later as opposed to, say, taking Fridays and say we're gonna end forty minutes sooner?
Yes, there is. And I favor a morning because typically that's more productive time. So if you're taking that time off to get teachers together, you know, mornings are typically a little bit more effective. Friday afternoon, I just don't think it's gonna be worth the, you know, Thursday afternoon, I'm not sure would be worth the benefit, to tell you the truth. At the end of the day, when teachers have been with students all day long, that's when they are most tired, most exhausted. So doing that first thing in the morning, which is, you know, just based on my experience and talking with, you know, other schools over the years. Typically, it's morning, it's a late start. I have heard of early releases. At that time in the afternoon, it's just a little bit more harder to be as productive and really be as effective with the work that you're doing. So that's why we look at it early morning. And we stuck to Thursdays because periodically we have Fridays where, you know, we have a holiday or a long weekend, or trying to keep that as consistent as possible so teachers have that time to meet once every.
You also lose all the control, because they're all gonna be back once a week, and their events aren't being with children. They opt to leave early anyway for that, so they miss out on the PLC.
Morning time is just a lot more effective, right?
And if this was already covered, forgive me, but, so we take forty minutes out of the day on Thursdays. At each grade level, how is it determined what portion of the material is being removed from that day? Is it consistent, is it rotating to each, like, well, you're gonna miss special this week?
You know, one of the benefits of elementary and not having a set bell schedule during the day is that you've got some flexibility there. I'll ask building principals to work with their building teams or their districts, probably their return to learn teams at some point, to have that conversation about how best to condense that day a little bit to account for that time. That'll look a little bit different for K five level than K six, K eight, than K nine, twelve. But I also can envision, especially at K five with five buildings, you know, there's some kind of protocols that all the buildings are gonna follow. But then an individual classroom teacher might have a little flexibility in how they use that time. Middle school, high school, the easiest solution is that you take a couple of minutes off of every class and just kind of condense the day. There are other options, but really, what I've asked is that the building principals work with their respective staff to make those decisions based on what they feel is gonna be best in those circumstances. So I don't know that there's one answer across the district. It'll be done at the building level.
I think as long as we can get some feedback on that as soon as later, we're gonna be hoping.
Just to jump on what James and Eric just said. We actually asked for more information about PLCs after a meeting in February, and it's actually on our future agenda item list. I think, I think we all believe in it, but I think we need education on it and sooner rather than later to understand, you know, I was, again, thinking about Eric saying, you know, what's, what's the measurement that this is really helping? And I think it's great, it makes sense, it makes sense to me that we would do this. But Ray, how do you know it's really helping? That it's forty minutes for the levels back?
Well, I think coming back and providing some updates as the year design next year is good. But I think I know what the future agenda item is. Get some feedback in here, and maybe administrators talk about that, so.
That'd be great.
They can give that to you first thing, and how that's been used this year, and how that can be used next year.
That'd be great.
I just wish there was a way to keep the schedule the same and use that forty minutes in a way that's more productive for students as well as to facilitate the LCs. Is there any?
Well, that was part of the conversation we had, and we were discussing when it started, that they had this conversation for ten years, you know, how to try to coordinate so you can have that common time across K five, across K eight, across nine twelve. And it's just been a challenge to free up that many teachers all at the same time. So maybe you can get six or eight or ten at a time, but you're still limited in terms of the access that teachers have to afford to each other.
It'll be interesting to see how many parents want their kids to still come to school at the same time. Because if that number's high enough, I mean, it's not gonna, we're gonna have to figure out a better way.
Yeah, you're right. Which is why we want to get that out sooner than later.
Yeah, I agree. So it would be nice to know that.
Yeah.
Because it just, it just seems like, it just seems like a huge hassle for everybody involved. So I'm just thinking maybe there should be, could be a simpler way. It would be interesting to know about how many parents are gonna wanna be able to have their kids here at the normal time anyway. Because then we're gonna have to hire people to.
It may not be a one, it may be dictated by the work schedule.
Yeah, that, I mean, yeah, for whatever reason, you know, I'm not faulting your reason. I'm just, I'm just thinking, if we're gonna have to wind up getting extra people to come in to watch those kids, maybe there's a more constructive way to handle that.
What can be able to get you get them to school?
Yes.
Well, I'm thinking that then we could keep the bus schedule the way it is and just have everybody come to school and work out something else. I mean, I, I mean, I understand that that's probably something that's difficult to come up with.
Kind of what is part of the stretch while the PLC is going.
Yeah. But, you know, maybe.
You just need to try.
Because the last disruption in the schedule.
I can tell you that my experience with PLC back in the day, and still, I'm sure now, you all know this, you're gonna hear from these administrator, administrator, whatever, and it's the most beneficial thing that I think education has come up with in a long time. At the high school, administrators watched the kids, the parents watched the kids. There was never really a big issue with the young crazy ten, but I don't think there was ever a really big issue for that particular period of time. So I think the benefits outweigh a lot of what we're worried about in the sense that things work out, and, you know, I don't know about Elmich, you know, that's another book that's insane, but I think we have to start thinking about the benefits of what this does for our teaching staff. And we can work around this with the kids, because we need to let them get together. Those teachers have to see them work together. And, well, I'm sure the principals will figure out a way to, you know, you're asking all these questions and have you really need to understand better what the PLC is and why it's so necessary? And the principals have a handle on that, and they'll be able to handle it. They'll know what to do, they'll know where to put people, they know what they're doing. I think we need to give them a break. And that, you know, you're worrying about things that I think we don't need to do yet. Let's see how things go, hear what they have to say. I like to give the principals the opportunity to say, hey, we got this under, I mean, if I'm wrong, principals, tell me, but you'll know what you're doing when the time comes.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not saying I support PLCs. I just think that if we can make it less disruptive for the students and for the parents, that then we have an obligation to do that.
I agree. At the same time, I'll tell you, I've wrestled with this for a long time. I've got kids at home. I have a parent of Sycamore students that lives with me and tells me all sorts of opinions about all sorts of things. Sometimes struggling, some not, but hopefully that's not recorded. So I've wrestled with this for a long time, but I think the benefit does outweigh the cost. The principals have really done a good job this year with having them on the pulse of all sorts of decisions that we've made this year. And it really felt like, you know, between Oscar and providing supervision for families that really need it, felt like they could make that work. I still think we need to get the survey out to get better numbers. Having a good sense is one thing, but numbers will be helpful. But I think that benefit is gonna outweigh, and, you know, I'll go back to the conversation last, or last meeting, reimagining what the school day looks like. So this is also kind of dipping our toe in the water. Because as you reimagine what the day looks like, it doesn't affect the students and the teachers, but it's gonna have an impact on families too. So I don't want to necessarily say that this is the first step towards all sorts of other, you know, potential disruptions. But I do think it's also a step in the direction of just kind of rethinking how we do things, being flexible. And, you know, the research on PLCs is very strong. So, you know, we'll continue planning for it. We'll get survey numbers back and talk about that. We'll get, we'll do a PLC presentation for the next board meeting and keep moving in this direction. I do expect concern, and I think it's very legitimate that we'll work through that as best we can. Any other questions?
Does that, does that time need to be accounted for throughout the school year as far as instructional time that needs to be added to the calendar? You know, like a day or two at the end of the year to account for that loss of instruction?
Not that I'm aware of. We have to have, you know, five hours instruction of every day. Under normal circumstances, if you're over five hours, you start to bank that time during the school year. I would love to believe that the state board of education, after this year and everything that we've accomplished, is going to continue to allow us to have some flexibility in terms of how we provide instruction and what that time looks like. Have to wait and see if that happens once we really come out of the pandemic. But I think between the time that we can bank after five hours, we should still be okay. Okay, I'm gonna move on. I expect more questions about these things. So if you have them, in a meeting, email, give me a phone call, and I'll be glad to answer them. So one of the last pieces of planning for the next school year, just wanna kind of go back to a conversation we had earlier, another future focused agenda item, multi-tiered system of support. I think that's gonna be a really critical component of what we do moving forward. MTSS is an evolution of response to interventions, first mandated by ISB in two thousand and eight. All students are benchmarked three times a year. If students are falling behind established criteria, we provide intervention and/or support. We continue to monitor them, monitors monitoring on an ongoing basis. If students succeed and get above that threshold, they can graduate out of MTSS. If they need additional support, we provide that. Our goal, however, is that the student starts to receive interventions, our goal is to help them enough that they don't need an intervention for a long time. So one of the things I'm proposing, and this is kind of ending seven point oh two and getting into seven point oh three, but these two things are connected. Chris Webster's done a great job of talking about learning disruption this year, not necessarily learning loss. And we've seen some of the initial math scores come back at the middle school, which were really pretty close. They are down a little bit, but they are really much closer than we thought they were going to be in six, seven, eight, nine. There's some learning disruption, so we need to plan for that. The MTSS program that we have in the district has been in place for a while, but the people who lead that are responsible for doing the variety of other things. So it's a stipend, a position for teachers who are MTSS leads in their building. Falls under Mr. Reining's responsibilities, falls under Chris Webster's responsibilities, which is his director of teaching and learning. But a lot of people have their hands in that pot, so to speak. So one of the things we'd like to do with ESR funds is create a district MTSS coordinator to oversee that program for the next two years, at least with those ESR two monies. And as we work through these next two years with those ESR funds, part of what we would ask that person to do is kind of assess our MTSS program. Where at that, what, any changes that may need to be made as we move forward. We'd also like to recommend creating these positions around asking the board, higher dates tonight, just asking the board to create these positions. Five math interventionists that work with students in grades K through five. We would also use ESR funds for those. We don't have that math data yet from elementary schools that they kept in those. We're just waiting for the data to come back and be uploaded into our Five Lab dashboard. The MTSS coordinator would oversee the entire program and conjunction with staff throughout the district. It'd be the first time we have one staff member who oversees the MTSS program across the district. They would work with all interventionists, all teachers. They would work with the admin team in terms of coordinating interventions and planning those, scheduling those. Throw up the debt person would help us to thrive, as I mentioned earlier. As we transition out of the pandemic, better grasp the impact of the pandemic on our students and make recommendations for the future of our MTSS efforts. So we'd like to move forward with posting those positions, creating a job description for MTSS district coordinator. I'm not ready to hire those tonight, but that is part of the return to learn update. I'm gonna pause for just a second. Any other questions on the return to learn update? Or how the MTSS recommendations for these staff that I've just talked about fits in with this return to learn for the next year?
Since we're using ESR funds, is the composition that these are just gonna be part-time, short-term positions?
I think that's really based on what this, especially the MTSS coordinator, what kind of assessment they make on our program, and what changes may need to be made. The end result is that any changes to the MTSS program are budget neutral after ESR funds. But I don't know what that looks like quite yet until we have this person in this position and have a chance to assess where we're at. Do we need to reallocate resources? Do we need to do things differently? So the commitment is neutral to the budget. But we may reallocate some things after two years in order to really make sure MTSS program is functioning as efficiently as possible. So I see where you're going, and again.
Well, because in education, you know, it's always said, once you put a program into place, it never goes away. So I'm a little nervous, I mean, that those ESR funds are only gonna be around for a limited time, I suspect. I see, I see great value in this right now, but I'm just wondering what happens in two years.
I agree completely, but until we get that person in to have really get a better sense. I will tell you, you can hold me to this, hopefully in two years. Still here in two years.
Can you take this down?
The goal is budget neutral. So again, part of this is coming up with recommendations in terms of where the MTSS program goes moving forward. Currently, we have people that are paid a stipend for that work. Maybe it's removing those stipends because we've got one coordinator that does that. But I don't want to do that quite yet until we've got that person hired and we've got a sensible community to do.
I think it's a great use of ESR funds, is just realizing ESR funds are all.
I totally agree. I'm a big proponent of living with better means.
Steve, could at the end of the two years, we walk away with the results of this MTSS coordinators, I guess, information showing how those interventionists have a direct, realizable benefit to students and maybe some tangible data to support future allocations for the MTSS program, which is currently in place, right? Is that, am I understanding that?
Yes.
Get that data?
Yeah.
You're also suggesting that with that data, we could theoretically make decisions about reallocating funds that are already currently being spent in a more efficient manner that would yield hopefully more data to support greater leaps and bounds in the MTSS program that already exists.
Exactly, exactly. And this is gonna come with, you know, other changes whenever you throw rock and pound, there's all these ripples, right? So I have to believe that there are some changes that we can make to the MTSS program to improve it. It's not to say that it's bad or it's horrible, just that we're always constantly looking for ways to improve. I'm also an affirmed believer that as time goes on and as things change, there are some ways to be more efficient, but we may also have to make some decisions in terms of staffing and what's most effective. So my goal is over these two years, again, to assess where we're at, see where we want to go. But that's also based on some data that we look at on a regular basis across the district that we talk about at board meetings, may not be every single meeting. But data that hopefully shows that what we're doing is working, that we can make improvements to make even even greater strides. And to go back to the thrive term, thrive as we come out of this pandemic over these next two years. as we come out of this pandemic over these next two years. But it needs to be based on the data, it needs to be based on somebody who can come in and make an assessment of where we're at and work with the staff to put some recommendations together. For the admin team to consider, to work with the teachers on and then make recommendations for it.
So is the two years based on what you think it's going to take to complete the proper assessment or is that based on the E S R money? Because I thought we had until twenty-four to spend that money.
The two years is really based primarily, more so on the E S R funds. I would, I suspect that as that person is hired and starts in that position, we're going to start to see kind of some immediate feedback. You know, it might take two, three, four months to really get a handle of where we're at, but I think we're going to start to see feedback pretty soon that will be ongoing as we get closer and closer to that two-year window.
Am I incorrect? Don't we have until twenty-four to spend that money? Because I just had a conversation on spending one hundred and forty-four million in the R A F for public schools and they're not going to spend it until the end of twenty-four.
No, it has to spend by September twenty-third.
So that's their, their thirteen is one hundred and forty-four, right?
I thought it was twenty-two, twenty-three, too.
What did you say? I didn't say that's September.
September twenty-third.
Their schedule is following until twenty-four.
Would it be different for goodness sake? It should be, sir.
Yeah, it is. And I have a list of different ways funding the whole state, so.
There's good potential in reducing those stipends on the advisement of that M T S S coordinator to make it revenue neutral. Do you think that there's enough room there that you could outline that?
I just, I want to be really clear about that's just one potential. I've not looked at those numbers and I wouldn't say that that's absolutely what we're going to do. I just wanted to use an example of other change that we could make, that would make this budget neutral after E S R one three. I don't know, the dollar value for those stipends is off the top of my head. And who knows? You know, this person making it and say, those positions are still very necessary. We need to look at other ways that if we want to continue exactly doing what we're doing, we'll look at other ways to maybe cut some costs. So I just want to be clear, that's just one example of something that we could look at, not necessarily representation.
Steve, it looks like it's E S R two, that's E S R thirty and twenty-three, E S R three you have until.
That's what I'm talking about. E S R three you have until twenty-four. Right? I know that's an estimated number right now, but.
We're still waiting for some information.
Yeah, there's so many.
That's the difference.
That was from Indiana, so it was the first one to come.
They're giving sixty million in two and they're giving one hundred and forty-four million in three.
They know that one?
Yeah. I have, I can tell you in the school district, this table they did all two things.
You know what?
Uh, we're, I want to say.
It's not confirmed yet, though.
No, the three ones are estimated. One and two are guaranteed, quote unquote. But I think, wasn't our, wasn't our number two paying like two million something?
Two million. But we've seen estimated payments go away.
You can pick.
We've seen, we've seen higher credit payments go away.
I think you can pick eight school districts on that list of eight hundred plus if you're already in building now. If just paid.
Yeah.
Just a second.
That really is all I have for seven point oh two and seven point oh three. I'm not asking for any vote on, on the return to learn plan. We did put down the M T S S program update and the M T S S coordinator and the five interventionists for a vote. I can work with the board direction. You can vote on that if you'd like. We wanted to put, put it on there as a potential vote. It's the board wanted to vote on, but really the vote would be necessary if you directly move in that position, that direction, then it's voting on the candidates when we're ready to recommend their employment. So just wanted to be clear about why we wanted to put that down there. Really gives the board the option to vote on that or just to move in the direction to do that.
I would be comfortable in just for myself in directing you to move forward with the M T S S plan as proposed.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody else okay with that?
Yep.
Okay. So we'll move in that direction. We'll get the positions posted, we'll start hiring those positions and then we'll come back in the later meeting with a recommendation to hire specific individuals. That ends most of the superintendents report. Jim's responsible for the last part, though. I'm going to turn it over to Jen for.
The last part is already different, I think. You know, the last one out, I think I was able to accommodate everybody's requests, so it will be what it will be.
How do you put the superintendents report then?
All right. Next item then is open discussions and future agenda items. Yeah, we got.
Took a lot of notes tonight.
Very good. I just hope Kathy put it all right, especially the, the promises for the future. The ones, the promises for the future, could you put those?
I would like to add, I know we talked about it, it seemed like forever ago, but if we could publish a short talk on the substitute page where we call off the district twelve seats right here, anything else we might need to change to make sure we have the support set up.
Other future agenda items, discussion items? Is there a motion to go into executive session for the consideration of matters related to the appointment, appointment, discipline or dismissal of personnel, purchase or lease of real property for the use of the district, negotiations and imminent litigation?
So moved in seconded, roll call.
Baby, please.
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Brandon? Yes. Tyler?
Yes.
Yes. Well, we're going to go into executive session. Thank you all for coming. A very informative meeting for my side. All right. Is there a motion to approve the personnel report as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in seconded, roll call.
Yes. Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Steven?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
There a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
We stand adjourned.
No.